Whenever you're ready, as soon as it turns six thirty.
Okay, everybody, welcome. It's now six thirty and welcome to the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one regular city council meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If you could please join me in the flag salute. That would be wonderful. If you could please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America
of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation
under God indivisible with liberty and justice
and justice
Thank you very much. I still have problems leading that for some reason, the Zoom. Welcome to the regular city council meeting of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is now six thirty-one. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the governor's executive order N two nine twenty and the orders of the Ventura County Public Health Officer issued March twentieth, two thousand and twenty Stay Well at Home Order. The council chambers have been closed to the public and council members and staff are participating remotely to help play our part in minimizing the spread of COVID nineteen. The public was informed in advance of this meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk. The city clerk has compiled all submissions and those received prior to the five P M deadline today were forwarded to the entire city council for review prior to this meeting. They will also be read into and part of the official meeting record. Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rollin?
Here.
And Mayor Gama?
Here. Tonight's inspiration will be provided by Councilmember Hernandez.
Oh, no, really? Oh, my gosh, I forgot again. April Fools. I didn't get to pull any April Fools jokes, so I just
That was very inspirational.
That was a really good one.
All your faces were really funny. That was, that was great for me. Anyway, I do have an inspiration and I, what I wanted to do this evening was welcome in springtime. Springtime is my favorite time of year. I get the spring fever. I just love all the the flowers and the butterflies and all the blooming that goes on and people just seem to be in a better mood. The sun shining and the warm heat from the sun just, I think, makes everybody feel, feel good. And so what I chose was something I found. Well, what I was gonna say, I, I searched it out online and it's right here. Let me just give me a second. So here it goes. Is there anything lovelier or more wonderful than springtime in the country? We think not, or in Fort Huaynini, we think not, which is why we're rounded up this best spring quotes right here. So they did it kind of for me. We think not, which is below, we're sharing our favorite sayings about the season in order to help you better usher in the season of fresh flowers, green grass, and sunshine. Whether you're looking for something inspirational like Pablo Nerudo's words come to mind, you can cut all the flowers, but you cannot keep spring from coming. Or something silly, consider Rob, like Robin Williams' words about how spring is nature's way of saying, let's party. We've got you covered. Of course, our, our personal favorite quote on this list has to do with the ones that offer a glimmer of hope. And I think we all need hope in this day and age. The same words that spring does. And spring does indeed give us hope. It's an opportunity for renewal. It's an opportunity to put away the past and begin fresh. So for instance, this, these wise words from Marty Rubens were, the deep roots never doubt, spring will come. From sweet flower quotes to Easter quotes and even a few all-purpose happy quotes thrown in for good measure, there's something here for just about everyone. And if anybody wants to go to the site, I'll be happy to share it. But the final quote that I have is from Anita Kazan, who puts it like this, "Spring will come and so will happiness. Hold on, life will get warmer." Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a wonderful inspiration. Thank God for hope and I too feel energized every morning just knowing that it's springtime. Even if it's foggy, it just has a way of bringing us back to what we're here for, to enjoy each other, smile and wave to everybody. And thank you so much for that. I really appreciate it. Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem Rollin?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if we don't approve it, like, why would somebody not approve it? That's, that's my only question, like, or what else could happen other than us approving it?
So there could be an item on there that that you have a problem with it being on there and then you, you would be able to make a motion to strike that item or pull that item and then and then we would vote on it. And that has happened previously, but rarely does it happen because generally speaking, we should review the agenda before the meeting and if we have any questions, hopefully we can work about before the meeting. Thank you for that question, though. That's really good.
The other thing is if they abstain, you can, you abstain from approving the meeting minutes if you're not present at that meeting. So that could happen too.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any general public comments?
Yes, sir. We have one general public comment and then several for item number one. So I'll go ahead and read the, the one general public comment is from Isabella Lamb and it reads, Dear City Council, my name is Isabella Lamb. I am fourteen years old. I live in Fort Huaynini on Pleasant Valley Road. I would like to propose an idea to establish a more productive community garden in the city. Owned lot between the Break Loop Tunas and Emerald Perspective on Pleasant Valley Road. This lot would provide more ideal conditions to produce more plentiful harvests. This garden would help the community as well as the environment. This is how we can help the community consume more clean produce. Also, this garden can create a positive impact on the environment. The produce from the community garden would be organic and free of nasty pesticides. This would also help the community by letting people participate in something good for them and the planet. The current garden by the museum is much too small to create a positive impact and does not get enough sunlight. This garden could be a great opportunity for the city to do something good that benefits everything. I'm very passionate about doing my part to help the environment and I believe this garden can help people learn to grow food and live a better lifestyle. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Sincerely, Isabella Lamb. And that concludes the one general public comment.
Okay, so then we're now gonna move on to presentations. And the first presentation is by Future Leaders of America. And it's my understanding that the additional public comments are with regards to that item. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And if you'll just give me just a moment, I'm admitting the Future Leaders of America group right now.
Okay, are we gonna do the public comments after their presentation or before?
That would be at your discretion, sir, whatever you would prefer.
Before, probably the best. Oh, Natalie. Hi, Natalie.
Give me one moment, sir. I'm just admitting the group right now. I have them all admitted. And I will go ahead and read the public comments. I believe we have eight of them. So they read, dear councilmembers, my name is Adriana T. G. Sanchez and I am a Fort Huaynini community member. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider the restrictions of flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. E-cigarettes have a lack of smell and are easily concealable, making it especially dangerous for kids to begin and continue a smoking addiction. Kids are especially vulnerable and do not understand the serious health risks that both flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes pose. Flavored tobacco products target our youth who are not of age to smoke and hook them with enticing flavors. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who often live in multi-unit housing. Because there's no restrictions on smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of youth and their families are often the ones that suffer. Fort Huaynini must first, must put the public community health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. The second comment is from Angel Lopez and it reads, hi, my name is Angel Lopez and I'm a community member that works with Fort Huaynini youth. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider the restriction of flavored tobacco and, and smoking in multi-unit housing. As a naive sixteen-year-old, my friends and I fell victim to tobacco and began smoking tobacco. The constant ad targeting we received broke us down and we gave in. Flavored tobacco products target our youth who are not of age to smoke and tries to hook them with enticing flavors. Our efforts should focus on preventing our youth from falling victims to the tobacco industry and making sure they have the best possibility of living healthy and smoke-free lives. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who often live in multi-unit housing. Because there's no restriction on smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of our youth and their families are often the ones that suffer. Fort Huaynini must put the public, public community's health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. I am in support of multi-unit housing ban and a on smoking to ensure our youth are safe and able to live healthy and prosperous. For the well-being of our present and future generations, I urge you to support a restriction on multi-unit housing smoking. The third comment is from Bernarda Martinez. And it reads, hi, my name is Bernarda and I am a community member. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider the restriction of flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. It has been shown that the tobacco industry strategically targets racial minorities, low-income individuals through its appealing advertisements and promotions. Flavored tobacco products target our youth who are not of age to smoke and tries to hook them with enticing flavors. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who often live in multi-unit housing. Because there's no restriction on or smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of youth and their families are often the ones to suffer. Fort Huaynini must put the public community's health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. We must prioritize the needs and health of our youth. The next public comment is from Danielle Gonzalez. Sorry, Daniel Gonzalez. Reads, Daniel, hi, my name is Daniel Gonzalez and I am the organized senior director with Future Leaders of America. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider the restriction of flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. Tobacco retailers are up to ten times more concentrated in low-income communities, which severely hurt people of color. Flavored tobacco products target our youth who are not of age to smoke and try to hook them with enticing flavors. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who often live in multi-unit housing. Because there's no restrictions on smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of our youth and their families are often the ones that suffer. Fort Huaynini must put the public community's health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. The next comment is from Eva Catlin and it reads, hi, my name is Eva Catlin and I work for the Future Leaders of America. F L A has given me the opportunity to work alongside youth from Fort Huaynini. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider the restriction of flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. Did you know that one in five high school students use e-cigarettes? This shows that students have easy access to tobacco products. That is not all. Flavored tobacco products target our youth who are not of age to smoke and tries to hook them with enticing flavors. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who often, who often live in multi-unit housing. Because there are no restrictions on smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of youth and their families are often the ones that suffer. The city of Fort Huaynini needs to step up and protect the youth from big tobacco companies. Lastly, choose the public community's health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. Thank you. The next comment is from Le'Kern Pepp. Hi, my name is Lee and I am a community member who works with youth in Fort Huaynini. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to, in the near future, consider the restriction of flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. Currently, one in five high schoolers smoke e-cigarettes. Furthermore, according to the two thousand and eighteen California Student Tobacco Survey, eighty-six percent of young tobacco users reported using flavored tobacco products. Our youth are being targeted with fruity flavors and sweet scents of vape. Many other cities have already made the youth a priority by restricting the sale of flavored tobacco in the city. Fort Huaynini must do the same. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who live in multi-unit housing. Because there's no restriction on smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of our youth and their families are often the ones that suffer. Fort Huaynini must put the public community's health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. The next comment is from Mati Ipasi. And it reads, my name is Mati Ipasi and I am both a youth organizer for the city of Oxnard and a current resident. I have lived in Oxnard for twenty years. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider the restriction of flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. I currently have a three-year-old baby brother, which makes me think of all the secondhand smoking young children are constantly exposed to. It is highly concerning that the tobacco industry strategically targets racial minorities, low-income individuals through its appealing advertisements and promotion. I want this strategic tobacco advertising to end before my baby brother reaches his teenage years and you can influence the environment in which our youth grow up. Currently, flavored tobacco products target our youth who are not of age to smoke by hooking them with enticing flavors. Additionally, secondhand smoke disproportionately affects minorities who often live in multi-unit housing. Because there's no restriction on smoking in multi-unit housing, the health of our youth and families are often the ones that suffer. Fort Huaynini must put the public community's health over profit and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. According to the two thousand and eighteen California Student Tobacco Survey, eighty-six percent of youth tobacco users reported using flavored tobacco products and one in five high school students use e-cigarettes. I do not want my, my young brother to be preyed on by the tobacco industry, which is why I urge you to use your power as a city council member and restrict flavored tobacco and smoking in multi-unit housing. The final public comment is from Melissa Mendoza. And it reads, my name is Melissa. I'm sorry. I had the last name wrong. My name is Melissa Villas-Wordsay and I'm a community member in Fort Huaynini. I am submitting a public comment to ask the city council to consider a ban on the sale of flavored tobacco in our city as well as to implement a smoke-free, multi-unit housing ordinance. As someone that has worked with youth, it is alarming to see how young our children are being exposed to the dangers of tobacco. Before COVID nineteen, we saw youth that depended on their vape pens to carry out simple day-to-day activities. Although we might not see that in front of our camera now, it, it might still be the case, given all the stress during these tough times. Flavored tobacco is very addictive and harmful to youth, given that their brains are not fully developed yet. According to the two thousand and eighteen California Student Tobacco Survey, eighty-six percent of young tobacco users reported using flavored tobacco products. We must protect our youth from the predatory market of tobacco. For, for long, the tobacco industry has targeted our youth and black and indigenous people of color. Even if our youth are not using these products, they don't necessarily have an option as to what they inhale when living in multi-unit housing. Our youth should be breathing clean air at all times in public spaces and buildings. But more importantly, in the comfort of their homes. In two thousand and nineteen, almost seven million U S middle and high school students, about twenty-five percent reported breathing secondhand smoke in their home and just over six million, about twenty-three percent, reported breathing secondhand smoke in vehicles. Fort Huaynini must put the public community's health over profit and restrict the sale of flavored tobacco and enact a smoke-free, multi-unit housing ordinance. Thank you for your time. That concludes our public comments for agenda item number one.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Future Leaders of America, are you ready to proceed with your presentation?
Um, yes, we have one student missing. She got kicked out. Brianna Deloro?
She's being let back in right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll pull up your presentation here in just a moment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
In, in the meantime, can, can I ask why citizens can't read their own public comment? Like, did, did we vote on that or? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious.
I'm not sure if we ever decided on that. I think that when we entered into the realm of Zoom, it was just the way we started doing it a year ago and that's perhaps something that we could consider in the future because obviously we let people in to do presentations. Perhaps we could let people in to do your public comments, so. But we can't talk about it too much because it's not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Gama.
Just so you know, I can see the presentation, the first slide. And I, I wanna congratulate you on a really nice picture. That's, that's beautiful.
I believe the Future Leaders can begin whenever you guys are ready, as long as your presentation is up as you wish.
Anna Soul, will you be starting it off?
Brianna will start us off.
Thank you. Brianna, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Gama and esteemed councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to come once again and really highlight the importance of the youth vaping epidemic. Today, my peers and I are here on behalf of Future Leaders of America, presenting and envisioning smoke-free communities. Before getting started, I wanna start off with a brief introduction of who we are. So Future Leaders of America provides many opportunities for us youth in our communities. Numerous of those opportunities provide our leadership training, educational experiences, as well as a personal development of youth and families. And to be the purpose of fostering a greater awareness and participation and reasonable leadership in a global and democratic society. Uh, next slide, please.
Next one.
Are you asking for the next slide? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so who we are. Future Leaders of America is a nonprofit organization serving Ventura and Santa Barbara counties. F L A was established in nineteen eighty-two as a response to the high incidence of destructive behavior among Latinx youth and the lack of role models. F L A has since grown and continues its work in providing youth advocacy, education, and volunteer opportunities. Another program we offer within F L A is our FLAMA meetings, which stands for Future Leaders of America Master Achievers. These are student-led, bi-weekly meetings that allow student leaders and youth from the Youth Leadership Conference to build on their leadership skills by developing advocacy projects on issues we see in our community.
Natalie, you accidentally muted yourself.
She's done with her.
Oh, okay.
So now that we have introduced who F L A is, we can now get started with our presentation. To start us off, an interesting fact. Did you know that e-cigarettes come in a variety of shapes and sizes and may not look like a tobacco product, which can make them hard to spot? A way that these tobacco devices have been disguised to be hard, hard to find, find is by making them look like other products, as you can see in the picture here. Jules look similar to U S B flash drives. This has made it easier for youth to hide from parents and schools, allowing them to use the products with ease. These products have a different look than when manufacturers introduced them approximately ten years ago, as they look like a traditional cigarette. As they have evolved, they become more colorful and brighter as they redesigned them to make them more appealing and less like cigarettes. But the negative effects remain. You are more prone to heart disease, respiratory disease, and negative effects on oral health and brain, even brain damage in young people. So not only have they been able to disguise the products, but they have been hooked by youth when, they have hooked youth with enticing flavors. Big tobacco companies know that traditional cigarettes were not appealing anymore, so their new way of trying to get people addicted is by introducing flavors. But they have specifically targeted the youth with these flavors. These flavors that are available specifically make the tobacco products less harsh, making it easier for the kids to try them. The tobacco industry wants to hook kids and get them addicted. That is why they use similar marketing tactics to candy. For example, some of the flavors are Orchata, cotton candy, and strawberry. They do not stop there. They also make the packaging attractive for kids by using bright colors and similar names to candies. Flavored tobacco comes in different forms. E-liquid, electronic smoking devices, cigars, cigarrillos, little cigars, smokeless tobacco, hookah pipes, also known as shisha, and mentholated cigarettes.
High High school students have reported to currently using e-cigarettes. One in five, to be exact, according to the C D C's morbidity, morbidity and mortality weekly report. Vaping is a huge public health crisis within our high, with, within our high schools. Not only are youth vaping, um, our younger population are also using these products. One in twenty middle school students currently use e-cigarettes. Most e-cigarettes contain nicotine. The, the same high-addicted drug in cigarettes. Some e-cigarettes may contain as much nicotine as a pack of twenty regular cigarettes. Now I'll pass it over to Brianna.
Thank you, Ernesto. Did you know e-cigarettes are not regulated? So people who currently vape never know what they're really inhaling. We do know that people are inhaling aerosol, nicotine, heavy metals such as nickel, tin, and lead. A recent study done to test the levels of nicotine in vapes found that it is difficult for consumers to know what e-cigarette products contain. For example, some e-cigarettes marketed as containing zero have been found to, because these products are not regulated, people published by a young person named Emmett, who was the first teen to get a double lung transplant because he started vaping. Even though vaping was a temporarily theme that he would thought, that he thought he would be able to quit whenever he chose, but became addicted to vaping. Emmett is a prime example of why these products should be regulated. Not only is the vaping epidemic a problem nationally, but it's close to home. In our schools, the lack of use of restrooms for students in the school. For me and my peers, we would have to go all across campus to use restrooms. At times, they would even shut them down. And even also at times, all the restrooms. Um, and this would be frustrating because, because why is it that the actions of these students, we are not able to simply have access to the use of a restroom at our school? Because of this situation, I noticed that it would lead to conflicts with other students. Also, because of this, I feel like it wasn't just me. I feel like many people go through the situation with losing friends because of this, because of the decision one makes wanting to just go out and smoke and just wanting to have fun. And don't get me wrong, you know, obviously, as a young person, as a young adult, or even, you know, everyone else, they love to enjoy, you know, to go out and have fun. they love to enjoy, you know, to go out and have fun. But when it comes to, you know, um, their way of fun is smoking and that leading to, um, not focusing to the important things such as, you know, your family, your schoolwork. And I feel like, um, with, with that, with those, with the amount of teens increasing and using tobacco products, I feel like it becomes a big problem.
Thank you, Brianna. Vaping is not separate from big tobacco companies. They actually own a lot of the smaller vaping companies, creating that illusion that it's not big tobacco companies. An example of this is the popular brand Vuse. It is owned by R J Reynolds Vapor Company, a subsidiary of the tobacco giant Reynolds America. These companies have seen the big decline in traditional cigarette usage and then see a big spike in the e-cigarette market and have come to take over. It's estimated that in less than ten years, they will sell the majority of e-cigarettes in America. This is a part of an ongoing strategy in the big tobacco playbook, said Erica Sword from the National Advocacy of the American Lung Association.
Next slide. Thank you. And so that being said, we really wanted to highlight in this presentation not only facts, but with all, with our student leader's stories of what they see in their community. Um, so Brianna, one of our youth leaders who's actually here with us today, um, she said that vaping is such a problem in our schools that people in my class vape during instruction, uh, pre-pandemic, uh, the teacher can't even tell, uh, they are smoking because it smells like perfume and looks like a USB drive. I can't believe that this type of product is available in our community.
Thank you, Marisol. Now we will be moving on to a short segment of our presentation of myth versus reality. So to begin, our first myth is that e-cigarettes produce a harmless water vapor. There's no secondhand vapor. However, the reality is that e-cigarettes do produce a vapor that has nicotine, harmful chemicals, and toxins known to cause cancer, among other things. These chemicals and toxins include formaldehyde, lead, and nickel. Next slide, please. Let's move on to another myth. E-cigarettes can help people quit tobacco. In reality, e-cigarettes are not approved by the FDA to help people quit tobacco. In fact, nicotine is a poison and a highly addictive drug that can lead to continued use of tobacco. Now, I will be passing on to Marisol, who will be covering community surveys conducted by my peers and I.
Next slide, please. So thank you, Hisses, for that. Um, so that brings us to the data portion of our presentation. Uh, so last year, pre-pandemic, F L A youth leaders, uh, went out to the city of Port Winimi to encourage our, a residents to take a survey. Uh, so we surveyed residents on their knowledge, attitudes, and perceptions of policies regulating the sale of flavored tobacco products. Uh, so we reached a total of a hundred and sixty-six individuals. Out of those a hundred and sixty-six, um, a, a hundred and fifty-one successfully completed the survey. Um, and all the participants who completed the survey were randomly selected and were at least of eighteen years old or older. Next slide. Okay, so when, uh, when the students went out to distribute the surveys, we wanted to test the community's knowledge on the issue with true and false questions. Uh, so as you can see on this chart, um, so the first question we asked was, is the use of e-cigarettes and vape pens rising among pre-teens? So the seventy-five percent of the participants, uh, did say true to this, um, statement. And the other twenty-six percent said false, or they were unsure or did not know. Uh, the next question we asked is if the use of e-cigarettes and vape pens is rising among teens? Um, so seventy-eight percent of the respondents said true to the statement and twenty-two percent said false, or they were unsure or did not know. In the following statement, we asked folks whether e-cigarettes and vape pens contain no tobacco. Um, so two percent said true, fifty-eight percent said false, and twenty-two percent said they didn't know. So this statement is false. Nicotine, the addictive chemical found in e-cigarettes, actually comes from the tobacco leaf. So yes, e-cigarettes and vape pens, uh, do contain tobacco. The next question we asked was if e-cigarettes and vape pens release an aerosol instead of smoke? Fourteen percent of the respondents said true, fifty-nine percent said false, and the remaining twenty-seven percent said they didn't know. So although e-cigarettes do not give up smoke like, like tobacco cigarettes, traditional cigarettes, they do expose people to secondhand aerosol or vapor, um, that may contain harmful substances. And for this section, our last question that we asked was, the aerosol released from e-cigarettes and vape pens is harmless? So fourteen percent of the respondents said true, fifty-nine percent said false, and twenty-seven percent said they didn't know. So the aerosol released from the e-cigarettes, it's not harmless? It does contain nicotine, cancer-causing chemicals, heavy metals such as nickel, tin, and lead, and many others. Next slide. Um, so next, uh, next we have the slide on attitudes and beliefs of the community. Uh, we asked the following statement, are e-cigarettes and vape pens addictive? So eighty-one percent said yes, five percent said no, and fourteen percent said they didn't know. So based on the earlier slides, there's still misconceptions in the community of e-cigarettes not being addictive. Uh, but what makes these, uh, e-cigarettes addictive is the nicotine that can be found in these products. Um, next we asked, would you be concerned if a pre-teen was using e-cigarettes and vape pen? Um, ninety-one said yes, they would be concerned. Uh, no, uh, four percent said no, and five percent said they didn't know. Lastly, we have, uh, would you be concerned if a teen was using vape pens or e-cigarettes? Eighty-five percent said yes, seven percent said no, and eight percent said they didn't know. Um, what's, uh, this is the last question for this section. Um, so the use of e-cigarette vape pen should be banned, whether smoking is banned, uh, wherever smoking is banned. So eighty-one percent said yes, nine percent said no, and the remaining one percent said they didn't know. Next slide. Thank you. So for this slide, we really wanted to highlight the respondents' answers to the following question. Do you agree or disagree with the following statement? It is easy for teens to buy flavored tobacco products in Port Winimi. So this is one of the most shocking results we found, um, from the collection of surveys. The majority of the respondents said it was easy for teens to buy flavored tobacco products in the city of Port Winimi with a fifty percent, fifty-one percent agreeing or strongly agreeing. Um, so this is something that the, the city council should really, um, should concern the city council because the majority of respondents did say that they strongly agree or agree, um, that it was easy for teens to obtain these tobacco products in Port Winimi. Next slide. So in this slide, we asked, um, two questions, whether or not they were concerned with the following statements. What is your level of concern with the sale of flavored tobacco products to pre-teens? Uh, so an eighty percent of the respondents are concerned or very concerned uh, with the sale of flavored tobacco products to pre-teens. And then the next question we asked was, what is your level of concern with the sale of flavored tobacco products to teens? Um, so the ninety-four percent of the respondents are somewhat concerned or concerned or very concerned with the sale of flavored tobacco products to teens. Next slide. So next we have, um, this slide. We asked the community what their thoughts were on supporting such policies in the city. As you can see, the majority of people surveyed were support of banning flavors. So sixty percent strongly support a law that would ban cigarrillos with only twenty-five percent opposing or strongly opposing to this law. The second one is, uh, would you support, um, a law? Sorry. That prevents stores near schools to sell flavored tobacco? So seventy-four percent strongly support or support this law with only seventeen percent opposing and strongly opposing. The third question we have, um, is about banning flavored tobacco. So we have a fifty-six percent strongly support or so, uh, strongly supporting or supporting this policy to ban flavored tobacco with only twenty-eight percent opposing or strongly opposing to this statement. So the last question we have, um, is, uh, we asked the respondents is if e-cigarettes, um, should be adding, should be, should be added to existing tobacco laws? Um, so sixty-seven percent strongly support and support this policy with only sixteen percent opposing and strongly opposing. Um, enacting such policies wouldn't go against the community. You actually have strong support from the community to enact policies to help everyone as a whole, uh, but also to help prevent, um, it helps with preventing youth accessibility to flavored tobacco products.
Thank you, Marisol. Now we bring to your attention what is happening at the state level. Back in August of twenty twenty, Senate Bill, also known as S B seven ninety-three, California passed a broad law prohibiting the sale of most flavored tobacco products to combat the targeting of a new generation of smokers. Big Tobacco has fought back relentlessly in defense of their, of their revenue and own greed and gathering signatures to push the le- the legislation into a referendum to stop the bill from becoming a law. The implementation of the statewide flavor law, Senate Bill seven ninety-three, was suspended and did not take effect as planned to on January first, twenty twenty-one. Now voters will have the chance to vote in the general election in twenty twenty-two. This is our opportunity as a city to take lead in advancing the health of our community. If stores are only selling flavored tobacco products, it's time for them to rethink what they are selling.
Next slide, please. So our recommendations to address the youth vaping epidemic locally to the city council are as follows. One, to restrict flavored tobacco in an effort to address the public health crisis and increase of vape usage amongst youth. Restricting flavored tobacco means preventing the sale and distribution of mentholated cigarettes and other flavored tobacco. It also means protecting our youth from the predatory marketing of the industry. And two, restrict smoking in multi-unit housing to protect our youth and families from harmful effects of second and third-hand smoke exposure. As we've seen, second and third-hand smoke disproportionately affects minorities. That is why we urge the city council to adopt a policy that will restrict smoking in individual units, including balconies and patios in multi-unit housing.
Next slide, please. To conclude our presentation, we wanted to con, uh, we want to conclude that many cities have already implemented restrictions on flavored tobacco because they saw the urge to address the youth vaping epidemic, including Oxnard, Ventura, Carpinteria, Santa Maria, San, Santa Barbara, and Guadalupe. They're seeing it as a health crisis issue. Why can't the city of Port Winimi do the same?
Next slide, please. Well, thank you, council, once again for this opportunity and taking the time to listen to my peers and I. We hope you enjoyed today's presentation and take our advocacy goals into consideration. With that said, we are now open to any questions you all may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from council? I, I can't see where our council members are. If you could raise your hand in the, uh, uh, where is it, in the reaction bar? Or just go ahead and start asking questions.
Um, I can, I can talk, I guess, if it.
Go for it.
Okay, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the Future Leaders of America for making that pre, uh, presentation. I was particularly impressed not only about the well-designed presentation that you did, but then your concern not only to your fellow teens, but to the community. Uh, I think that's quite refreshing in a time like this. Um, I personally fully understand, uh, your goals as far as your concern for having, uh, being in a enclosed area with secondhand smoke. Um, on a side note, uh, I'm very impressed by, um, uh, I, I saw in the, uh, in one of the, the members of your group was a, uh, a student Natalie Lea, Natalie Leon, who was a, uh, who took a, uh, a tennis program for a number of years in Miranda Park. And, uh, she continued on with that sport. And it's kind of a shame, you know, kids, we teach kids to be physically fit. And then they, uh, get caught into a situation where they can't get out of it without, you know, trying not to be uncool and having all this stuff going on. So I just wanna appreciate y'all to, uh, making that presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tan Rollins. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Gama, and thank you, Ms. Mendoza and all the members of Future Leaders of America. That was an excellent presentation, um, so well organized. It's, um, one of the best presentations I've seen presented before our city council. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, I do have some questions for you regarding the sample of, um, you said a hundred and sixty-three people from Port Winimi. Can you tell me more about, um, how you selected the sample and, um, how you actually had them con- fi, uh, complete the survey?
Yes. Um, so when the students went out to collect surveys, um, so mostly, uh, we had to ask for permission to stand in front of stores. Uh, so mostly we got a random sample from Ralph's in Port Winimi. And so we did ask, what is their SIP code? So we can make sure that we were getting the community members' input from them who actually lived in Port Winimi. Um, and the total sample size was a hundred and sixty-six, but only a hundred and fifty-one successfully completed the survey.
Okay. Did, um, uh, did not all the respondents complete all the questions? Cause it seemed, uh, when we get into policy, there was the mark, it seemed like there weren't as many answers. Uh, so many pity, there weren't as many people answering the questions.
Um, yes, um, so there was a, there was a section where we asked if they wanted to skip the questions. Um, so they, they were giving the, we offered them that, uh, that choice of skipping the question if they, if they didn't feel comfortable answering it. So that's why the numbers, uh, look a little bit different compared to the other slide.
Okay. Um, have you done the same presentation before the Ventura County Board of Supervisors?
No, um, this is our first time presenting it.
Okay, okay. And so, um, I, what I'd like to do is just refer this to our city manager if we can. I don't know, um, Mayor Gama, if you were going to do that. But, um, I'd like to refer this item to our city manager and city attorney to look into the feasibility of, uh, passing this ordinance, um, banning, uh, flavored tobacco in Port Winimi. So, um, if we could do that, I would apprec- appreciate it. I don't know if we need a motion or to vote on this.
This item's a presentation only, so, um, I think we'd have to ask for it to be agendized at a future meeting. Councilmember Perez.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you and a very good presentation. And I'm happy to see from our conversation that you took some advice and you looked into other ordinances in other cities that have enacted that. And I will concur with, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, I was going to suggest as well to, uh, put that on an agenda for further discussion. And I would recommend you taking this presentation higher up, going to the Ventura County Board and, um, hit all of the councils that you can. This needs to be, obviously, taken, the school district would have to be the one to, um, make any rulings on taking care of it in their schools, but I, I can't see why they wouldn't. Uh, but I recommend you going, to keep going and talk to more councils and the Ventura County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez, Councilmember Martinez, do you have a comment or question?
I just want to say that you guys did a great job. Uh, I'm so glad to see you guys again. I, I really liked the presentation that you guys had done for me personally. And then this one got even much better and this is, this is really good. And, you know, I really do think that we should ban smoking at multi-use housing and basically take the next step. So, good job, you guys. Um, keep it up.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Um, I would, I, to appreciate your presentation, I appreciate your passion. And, um, working on health issues for youth is a real important matter. And, um, I think before I had suggested to you to take up the whole issue of, of, uh, youth health. Number one killer of teenagers is auto accidents and it's their number one health risk. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among teenagers. So, um, and then also I'd strongly encourage you to use the power of, of your influence, your persuasive arguments, because you have very good data, you have very good information. And, um, I think it would be helpful to share that information where that information is needed. Sometimes adults, believe it or not, aren't aware of the health risk of secondhand smoking stuff. And what, if you could be a catalyst to give them useful information, I, I think that would be helpful in, um, protecting your peers from potential harm. And, um, a lot of times, um, for example, we banned, as a result of the work that you've done and the presentations you brought to us, we banned cigarette smoking at the beach. We've banned vaping at the beach. And guess what we find at the beach in our weekly beach cleanups? Cigarette butts all over the place. We find them on the ocean. We, we banned smoking on the pier, smoking on, on the beach. So bans, yes, um, are important, it's the law, but sometimes common sense educational campaigns could be more effective. Um, so I do appreciate everything you've done and I'd like our, um, my colleagues have recommended. I think you should go up the chain of command to the County Board of Supervisors, to the City of Oxnard. And, um, you know, just like with, let's not litter, let's, let's get a big, strong campaign going to provide information and education to people who may not be aware of the health risk that, you know, your neighbor may not be aware that they're putting you at risk with their behavior. So, um, thank you very much. We really appreciate the fact that you want to come and speak to our city council. It's, it's wonderful and we want to encourage more youth involvement. We want to see you continue to be active. Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, I, I, I think, am I muted? No, I'm good. So I, I like what you guys are doing. One of the other things that I had suggested last time is to look into, you know, other things that you guys can also do to make positive change. And just one of the, since you guys are doing such a great job, I was just kind of thinking like, in high schools, we only have one semester of health. You know, in the four years and they, and they cram so much stuff. I, I think it'd be great to advocate for more health classes in the high school or even in middle school. And like having, having it be like an actual class, because I don't even think they have an actual class in middle school. And they don't have an, and they only have one health class in high school. And I think health is so important to the point where maybe they should, we should be having a health class every single year for our students. And I think something like that would be really, really great. But, but going back to what you guys were saying, like, because none, none of us actually asked you any questions. So here's, here's a question that I have. What would you say to our one and only business that we have here that, that just sells tobacco? You know, what would you guys tell them like for the ban, you know, like, uh, how, how would you guys go ahead and tell them like, hey, we, we want to ban it? Like, I'm, I'm just curious. How, how would you guys go about that?
Um, for me, uh, for someone who only sells like those particular products, um, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for them to, to start selling other types of products, right? Um, even with the seven, the SB seven ninety-three, um, once it goes in like, for us to decide whether if it's going to go into effect or become a law, um, they're going to run out of business. Um, so it's a, it's a good idea for them to start selling other types of products, not just flavored tobacco products.
And, and I, I kind of wanted to hear from the, from the students. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Marisol.
No, no worries. That, that's just what I, I would have wanted to say, but the students, go ahead, um, if anybody wants to reply.
Yeah, so I'm kind of similar to Marisol. Um, I think it's really good opportunity to already kind of get ahead of the game. Cause like Marisol said, um, SB seven ninety-three will be up for a vote again. And if the, that does pass, then ultimately they will have to turn over. And really, um, we're not essentially trying to put them out of business. That's not our goal here. Our goal is really to protect the community as a whole. And really what we're focused on is health equity. And, um, I, in my personal opinion, I believe that business or like essentially like, um, profit should never be going over one person's life. And that's just kind of the reality of what big tobacco companies are per se, um, per se, in terms of them specifically targeting youth and minorities like we are here in Port Huinimi. And so essentially I would just like kind of mention like, you know, um, take this as an opportunity essentially to start transitioning over to another type of business that may be even more, um, beneficial or profitable than the one that they currently are in. And just really taking that opportunity up and, you know, staying ahead of the game. Cause, um, regardless or not, there's always going to be people who are going to speak up. And, you know, eventually we do want to have this policy passed. And whether that be here locally within like the next two years or in statewide with SB seven ninety-three, um, there will eventually come a time where we do try to, um, pass this policy in terms of health community. So that's kind of my general response. So it's very similar to Marisol's, but, um, she kind of hits spot on. So, yeah.
And you, Jesus, appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. And I too have a question. Um, as you know, you're talking about, um, teenagers getting a hold of a product that is illegal for them to buy. And so what would you say to the adults who, um, are, are adults and, um, have, for whatever reason, decided to use these products? And, um, I understand like some adults may be using them incorrectly and exposing youth to secondhand exposure, which I are pretty sure all of us are against. But what would you say to adults? Um, how would you, how would you positively, positively change that behavior that's affecting youth? Um, do you have a strategy for that? Um, like I said earlier, a ban is one thing, um, you know, getting people to change their behavior is a whole nother. So how, how would you approach, um, adults? Okay, um, would anybody like to take a?
Wait for the next prepara- presentation for that.
Yeah, that, that's a, you know, actually that's a really good suggestion, like, because if we could influence the behavior that's causing the harm, like for example, speeding causes accidents and so we have speed limits. Cell phones in cars cause accidents, so we try and tell people, hey, don't use your cellphone while you're driving. But what do we see out on the road? We see people always trying to use their cellphone and driving. So, um, yeah, maybe that's something that you could come back and present to us. Like, how could we help positively influence good behavior on behalf of adults? Any, any other comments or, 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 or questions of us from, um, Future Leaders of America?
I have one more question.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gama. Um, Marisol, what is our current grade under the Lung Association? Um, since we did take some action, uh, last year?
So, um, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Um, yeah, so the current grade for Port Huinimi is a C. Um, so if you're a couple of points away from a B, but you're at the lowest C, uh, with the grading policy, yeah.
And if we move forward with this ban, where would we be?
Um, if it would be with the ban, um, I believe it would be, uh, at a higher C or even a B.
Wow. That's a hard, uh, grade to earn. Okay.
Yeah, um, I can totally get back to you all, uh, regarding the, the grading scale. And I can, um, I can forward you that email that I have as well, um, with the grading scale for the American Lung Association.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And thank you again for the presentation.
Yes, thank you very much. And I got one more comment. Um, you know, there was a time where, uh, CVS, I think it was CVS and possibly Savon, where they had huge amount of tobacco products they were selling. And, um, because of students like you and, and organizations like you, they, they were, they targeted them and convinced them and persuaded them to stop selling tobacco products. And, you know, that's another tool in your, in your, uh, toolbox. And so it was really, really, they haven't stopped selling alcohol yet, but the major drugstores did stop selling tobacco products because of perhaps organizations like you. So that's another angle you may want to consider. Are there any other comments or questions for Future Leaders of America? On behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to thank you for a professional and well-presented presentation. We really appreciate you and we would love to have you back at any time. Thank you very much for participating in our meeting.
Yes, for sure. And I just want to say thank you, everyone, for listening to us. And, and we hope to hear from you all soon. And have a good ra- uh, rest of your evening.
Thank you. And, um, I, I would invite you to stick around because our next presentation is going to be something to make you feel really good and fuzzy and warm inside. Thank you for coming. Okay, next presentation is Ventura Autobahn Society by Cynthia Hartley, the Executive Director. How you doing, Cynthia?
I'm good. I'm trying to, uh, let's see, there we go.
Those are quails. Thank you. Are you ready to go?
Yeah, let me, um, switch my screen sharing. Okay, hopefully you're seeing my cute little snowy plover.
That's the cutest little baby snowy plover I've ever seen.
Um, okay, well, let's keep going. Um, yes, it kind of, um, changing gears a little bit. Um, so I'm Cynthia Hartley, and I'd like to thank Mayor Gama for inviting me to present tonight. I presented a little over a year ago before the pandemic started, really just introducing, um, the, to, uh, the city council in Port Huinimi, our program and what we do. Um, I'm with Ventura Autobahn. And for the last sixteen, seventeen years, we have been, uh, running a shorebird recovery program on Ormond Beach, focused on the snowy plover and the leaf turn. Both are on endangered species list. Um, we're trying to help them, um, recover at Ormond Beach. So I'm going to give an update, um, where we've been for the past year. Uh, some of it's warm and fuzzy, some of it's not. Um, uh, I do want to make clear that our, all the imagery and all the video are from Ormond Beach. These are all our birds. And, um, this presentation is also, um, it's online. And I just put it in the chat line in case anyone wants to look at it later, because I am going to go through this pretty quickly. We do have a lot of really kind of cool imagery. Um, and this is on another snowy plover chick. So this is a snowy plover nest. If you can't see it, it's right here, kind of off to the right. Uh, they are very sand-colored, they're speckled. The birds lay them right in the sand, so they, they blend in completely. Um, and this is typical of a snowy plover nest, um, also right in the open. Uh, they normally lay three eggs. And this is a snowy plover video we got a couple of years ago. This is also one of our birds. Uh, both male and the female incubate the, the, the eggs and they do so for four weeks. Um, and they're very vigilant. Um, they're always keeping an eye open for anything on the horizon that might be a threat. If something does come along, they run off the nest, they try to distract whatever danger it is away from their eggs. And they're, they, they leave the eggs alone, um, relying on this camouflage, which is amazing. Uh, for a human walking down the beach looking at this nest, you're not going to see it unless you really have a trained eye, because they blend in, which is the risk. Um, they lay them in the open sand on Southern California beaches in the summertime. So that's, um, that's really where they've gotten in so much trouble sharing the beach with humans. So after four weeks, they hatch out into these really cute little fluff balls. They are, uh, pellet chickens. So they, they hatch and they're mobile, they can run around, they instinctively peck at insects, so they can feed themselves. Uh, but they still need their father to take care of them. The, the mother will leave and start a new nest. So dad takes care of them. He leaves them around, um, until they can fly. It takes about four weeks. So this is video, one of our volunteers caught. This is a male with his two little chicks. After they hatch, they have to find food. So he leaves them out of our protective fences to the tideline. There you can see kind of the, the wet sand. Um, they have to go down to the raft of seaweed where all the insects are in order for them to get enough to eat so that they can, they can grow and survive. So this is sort of where the conflict is also coming in, at the tideline, not only where humans are, um, but where we're getting a lot of dogs still. Even though dogs are banned from Ormond Beach, we still see a lot. And, um, if a dog would run through here with these little chicks, um, they'd get separated from their parents. Um, you know, they might get stepped on, they might get eaten, um, they probably get lost. Or, you know, if, if nothing else, they're going to lose a lot of energy trying to save themselves. So that is one of our areas where we need to work on some improvement to help the survival of these guys. Um, so it takes them four weeks out here in order to, to grow enough to fly. So this is a plover nest, uh, I'm sorry, leaf turn nest. A lot like a plover nest, only two eggs. They tend to decorate their nest a bit less, but also in the open sand, also very camouflage. Um, plover nests are, turns tend to leave, um, like two eggs and not three. And here's some turn video we got a couple of years ago. Um, they also share nesting duties. This, um, this bird's about ready to get fed, um, by its mate, a nice big fat fish. So they incubate their eggs for three weeks, so it's a little bit shorter. And then when their eggs hatch, also a cute little fluff ball comes out. Um, they can also, they're up and running in a couple hours. But these guys are dependent on their parents to feed them because, uh, their parents die for fish in nearby water. So it takes a long time for this bird to grow and, and learn how to, how to catch its own fish. So these guys, um, after they hatch, they also go out to the tideline. And this is, this here is a bird that probably can fly, but still dependent on his parent to bring him this fish. Um, so they're out there for about three weeks also before they can fly. And this is a picture we took, uh, looking back to, towards Huinimi. This is right at, uh, Ormond Lagoon. And you can almost see Huinimi here, here. And these are all the people that walk at the tideline. So, um, when our little chicks come out and they can't fly yet, they're also very vulnerable out here. But this is, this is their pattern, this is what they do. So again, if a dog should run through here, um, that would really, um, harm the, the success of these birds that are, um, learning how to fly and, and, and trying to eat. So I'm going to talk briefly about the components of our recovery program with a lot of, a lot of pictures. Um, this is the area that we survey. Uh, here's Arnold Road. This is where Walter Fuller is, for those of you who know him. Um, we survey all the way from the lagoon fence, um, including this area behind the dunes, uh, out here, what we call the salt pan. And then all the dunes, all the way over to the border of Port Huinimi and, and, um, Ormond, I'm sorry, and the Oxnard, um, all the way in front of the lagoon. Typically, we don't get nesting in front of the lagoon, or we haven't. Um, when we had those years of all the homeless encampments here, there was no way we were ever going to get nesting. But previous to that, we did get nesting. Um, it's really great that the homeless have been moved out of here because, you know, it could be that, that nesting is going to come back. And based on what we've seen, we're pretty sure in the next few weeks, we are probably going to get a nest or two snowy plovers right here. This is that end of that water, um, from the lagoon, uh, that's, that's stretches the furthest south. Um, we're getting some, some breeding activity there. So we're keeping our eyes on that the next couple of weeks. So what we do, um, get another snowy plover nest. This is in the salt pan, um, or this particular nest. So we locate the nests, we mark them with GPS so we can map them. And then we come back every week and we check the nests. And we track what happens to them. If they hatch or fail, if they fail, we figure out why they failed. And, um, we're looking for predators, we're looking for human interference. And based on whatever, whatever that failure is, we're trying to figure out ways that we can, um, do a better job helping these, these, um, eggs survive and hatch. Um, and of course, you know, part of what I'm doing tonight, I'm, I'm reporting back, I'm explaining to everybody, you know, what's going on. Um, and we do work very closely with landowners and enforcement agencies. So one of our tools that we use a lot is the trail camera. We sit out twenty-four seven. Uh, they're motion activated. We put them on nest. And since we only check nests, you know, at, at the worst, you know, once a week, that's, that's a long time in between checking. So, um, if we have a camera on a nest, it tells us exactly what day the nest hatch, hatches on. And or if the nest is predated, you get to see what the predator was that took the nest. And we'll see some video here in a minute. Um, and if we have humans walking through areas that are closed, we get a look at who it is. Um, so we have some of that video too. Um, so this is a great tool for us. So we have some of that video too. Um, so this is a great tool for us. And this is some chick video, um, from last year. I wanted to show some of our successes. Um, I have three nests that we have that hatched. Last year, we had a really good year, um, fifty-three snowy plover nests, thirty-two of those hatched. So it's about sixty percent survival. Um, we've had better, but it's still not bad. What I don't have up here is that we had forty, um, breeding adults, which is really good. The goal for Ormond Beach, the Fish and Wildlife Service recovery goal for Ormond Beach is fifty breeding adults. This is a lot better than what we've had over the last, you know, two decades, which is probably around twenty to thirty. So we're doing really well in that regard. Uh, another tool we use are predator exposures and some of these pictures we're showing of nests, you can kind of see a cage structure over the nest. Um, we put these on top of nests. Here's a snowy plover right here sitting inside its predator exposure. The plovers don't fly off their nest typically. Normally they run out, they, they can run right through these, uh, the openings in these wires, uh, no problem. It doesn't seem to bother them at all, but it protects them from larger animals coming in here and eating their eggs. So like coyotes and ravens are a huge problem. They'll eat the eggs and this protects them and this does a really good job. This has been a great tool for us on Ormond Beach. Here is a video of a raven raiding a nest and does not have a plover, um, does not have a predator exposure on it. And here's one with, the raven knows the eggs are in there and he really wants them. And he cannot figure out why he cannot get to them. And we typically see these guys visiting the nest every day, trying to figure out how to get that, those eggs. So, um, especially for ravens, this has really helped us a lot using these exposures. And this is another kind of predator. This is in slow motion. You have to slow it down because it happens so fast. So that was a gray horned owl that tried to grab that adult sitting on the nest. It, instead it ended up knocking the exposure off of the nest. The adult got out and it survived. Um, and we did see this adult come back later. And the owl did not get his snowy plover, uh, snack for dinner. So these cameras are great. It gives us lots of information we wouldn't have otherwise. So fencing, anyone who's been on Ormond Beach has seen this fencing. And this is a great picture. I love this picture. We took this one year when we were actually mapping the beach at the end of the season. This here is our fence line. So here is inside the fence. And then outside the fence, you can see there really isn't an inch of sand that has not been trampled or walked on. So this inside area is really, really clean and pristine. And this is of course where we get our nesting. So these nests are really protected by this fencing. It does a great job. We have three kinds, uh, the mesh fencing, which does a good job in just giving us a vis, um, like a visual barrier, for where the nesting habitat is. We also use this post and cable, which is better for the animals because they can run in and out. They don't, they don't have a risk of colliding with a, a fence post or getting tangled in the mesh. But the problem is humans go right through these and we had to, to kind of dial, dial back on our use of this kind of fencing because we had a lot of problems last year with people trespassing. And then we have this PVC piping that you might see this summer, uh, that we use for temporary symbolic. It's something easy for us to carry down the beach if we find a nest that occurs outside the habitat fences. And this is an example of where that would happen. So this is a map of the beach and where all of our fences are. So the, here's Arnold Road again in Medu. And then this is the beginning of the lagoon. So we have three main habitats. And, um, we've had issues with the power plant because it hasn't been fenced in. And this next one shows, uh, locations of all our snowy plover nests last year. So for the most part, they're inside the fences, but we had a bunch that are outside the fences here. So this causes us a lot of hard trying to figure out how to protect these because we get a lot of traffic coming up here in the dunes. So here, here we are. I'm going to talk about the volunteer naturalist program. But what we're doing here is this is this PVC, um, piping that we've walked down the beach about a mile from Arnold Road. And we're putting this, um, around this nest in front of the power plant to protect it. And this nest did, did end up hatching. Our volunteer naturalist is a three-hour, um, classroom training, which actually this is the last picture before we had our COVID shutdown. It was in early March last year. Since then, we converted to a Zoom training. We still do it once a month. We had almost four hundred hours of volunteers on the beach last year. We're hoping to do better this year since COVID's easing up. We do our trainings once a month on the third Saturday. So, uh, for signups, um, we have signups on our website on our volunteer naturalist page. We follow up with the field training so everybody feels comfortable what they're doing in the field. And these are just pictures of our volunteers doing the different tasks. We have lots of fence repair that now is going to be done. This girl here is taking data on rats, so you'll, um, sort of like citizen science or community science, uh, collection and greeting the public. Um, and here we have a couple that are doing sort of a beach patrol, um, engaging dog owners, explaining to them, you know, why, why dogs are harmful to birds. And once COVID lifts a little bit more, we can do more outreach, maybe bring binoculars down to the beach and actually, actually show people these birds. We also do, um, engage, like I said, dog owners and keep track of the dogs that we see. So another challenge we have are off-roaders. And last year was really awful. The last year was the first year we've had in over a decade. These are actual tracks of off-roaders that got into the nesting habitat. And we're doing donuts around dunes and you can imagine if we had nesting in here. Fortunately, uh, we didn't lose any nests last year because they were a little bit earlier before we had most of our nesting and before the turns came in. But this runs over dunes, it kills vegetation, it destroys dunes and is just really horrible for the habitat. It was a big problem last year. And here we have, um, motorbikes that we encountered on the beach. We tried to stop them and talk to them, but they would not stop for us. And, um, this was right in front of the power plant and they rode, rode all the way down to Wainimi and they went out through Wainimi. And it's impossible to get, I mean, to call the police and have them encounter these guys and just be, take a miracle. They're really hard to catch. So this is the ongoing issues we had with the off-roaders last year. This is the back fence where they were coming in. We fix the fence, someone breaks open the fence. We fix the fence again on one of our nest surveys, someone opens the fence. We fix the fence and here, finally, this is over the Fourth of July, a truck came through and just drove through the fence. So, and this is just, you know, a, a subset of all the fixings that we did and all, all the vandalism that happened to this fence. So we're, we're looking into getting something more, more permanent, um, like a chain link fence or K rails or something, because this is, this is probably one of our worst trouble spots as far as off-roaders getting onto the nesting habitat. Which brings me to our big concern, really our area where we can, we can help these birds, um, by helping these chicks survive. Even though we've had really good success helping nests hatch and we have more, more, um, breeding adults than ever before, our actual chick survival is pretty, pretty poor. So this map here is all the sightings we had of chicks last year. These white crosses are younger chicks, so like the, like one to two weeks old. And the older chicks are green, um, up to these stars, which are fledglings. And we only had five fledglings last year. And the Fish and Wildlife goals are to have essentially one fledgling per adult male. So we really should have twenty to reach our recovery goals. So we're close on our recovery goals for breeding pairs, but we're very far away on fledglings. And I think, um, you know, one of our issues here is this area that has not been fenced. But we've had several nests here, but our chicks disappear. Um, we don't know where they go. And we do see a lot of younger ones making it out to the tideline, but we rarely see the older ones. Except here in the salt pan where it's very protected and there's a lot of forage for them. So they never actually have to go out to the outer beach.
Cynthia, may I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Um, on the left side of this slide, there's a concentration of white and green.
Yep.
Yes, right here. That's closest to Wainimi Beach and the border with Oxnard. Wha- what's going on there?
I'm so glad you asked me that because that's something that I think is really important to talk about. So we have, it's hard to see because of all of these, um, chick sightings we have. But we have our symbolic, actually our post and cable fencing here. And it runs from the corner of this fence towards where the beginning of the water is because the birds really love this area. And all the, the little chick families, the plover families and the turns, they gather here because there's a lot of forage for them. The problem is last year, we never were able to spot any, any older fledglings. And typically every year, this is like one of our best spots for fledglings. In fact, uh, we normally get more here than we do at any other place on the beach. And I think what happened last year is we put up our, our post and cable fencing. We really can't put Cinta Flex here because there's so much movement with the tide, um, it would probably just get washed out. But that fencing was stolen. Uh, by midsummer, it was gone. I'm pretty sure it ended up out in the homeless encampments. I'm quite sure they took it. And, um, between all the traffic with these encampments coming, because I saw a lot of people coming back and forth in carts and we had, um, uh, enforcement vehicles coming up here. I, I think, I think it was just too much. It, we just lost, we lost the chicks. They couldn't, um, uh, survive very well out there. So that's-
That's the area where trash concentrates because I know that in our beach cleanup, we focus on that area. And, um, you know, it's, it's really strange how that trash gets there because I think it comes through the water or I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, the, the, the lagoon tends to fill up there with a lot of water and then it dries up. So I think it's like a bathtub ring. I think the trash tends to like float up to the edge and then it's just left behind as the water recedes.
Do you think the trash has anything to do with the lack of fledglings?
I don't think so because we've had fledglings, really, you know, pretty good survival of fledglings there in past years. And it's only recently that, um, there's been a really good effort to get rid of the trash. So, um, I don't, I don't think so. Now, the problem with trash is it attracts things like crows and ravens, which are natural predators of snowy plovers. So, um, also gulls. Um, gulls are actually quite good at catching chicks. We've seen it happen. And as you know, gulls love trash. So, um, you know, that's also a concern with the homeless encampments because they really do draw, I mean, there's no doubt they draw in a lot of these natural predators of, of these birds. So that could also be a factor in it. But we have replaced the fencing this year and we're going to be on top of it a lot more. So far, it hasn't been stolen. It's been up for two or three weeks. We feel pretty good about that. But it is roped at this point. So we, we do expect at some point it's going to disappear. So we, we are planning on trying to, uh, keep on top of replacing it as much as we can. But that impacts our budget because we have to buy more supplies every time this happens. So, um, that also moves me on to dogs. This is a map. So our, our volunteers make a, a GPS point and upload it every time they see a dog. And this is just when we've had volunteers on the beach. So this was all last year. So this was during the nine hundred some hours that we had volunteers out there. And, um, you know, we had dogs over the whole length of the beach and that has also got to have an impact. People who walk their dogs on a leash at the tideline, it really, I mean, I'm pretty okay with that. But it's the ones who bring them off-leash, which is also, I mean, that's a, that's a double violation. And retrieve them in the lagoon or just let them run all over, that's a big problem. And that's going to impact our, our, our chick survival out there at the tideline. So, um, I've, I've been talking to the Oxnard police and I do need to talk to the Wainimi police also. But one of the feedbacks we had was that there, people get out there and they don't really know that dogs are not allowed. So we're going to try to help out by introducing more signage. So we've, we're having these signs made up and we're going to put them on all of our, our habitat fencing. And I wanted to, just to throw this in here too. This three hundred, what we're going to do is put, and this is not related to dogs. We're going to put, uh, distance markers along the fence, starting at the Arnold Road side. So on our habitat fence, every hundred meters, we're going to have a sign. So it'll be a hundred meters, two hundred meters, three hundred meters, the whole length of the beach. That helps us communicate with each other. If I'm out doing a survey and I say I see a couple chicks at a thousand meters, I can lob that into our data sheet. And the next person who comes out looking for them knows exactly where to look. But we've also gotten feedback, uh, the police love this, um, marine mammal rescue loves this and so does bird rescue because people just report, you know, hey, I've got, you know, a, a, a beach sea lion at, you know, meter mark or three hundred. And it's very easy for them to find. So these are also, um, we're having them printed up. They should be done this week. And we'll be getting them out on the fence line in a, probably a week or two. Walkers also like this because it kind of gives them a feel for, uh, for distance and turnaround points. So we kind of feel that that's a great kind of community thing. Oh yeah, for homeless. Um, this is someone, that's, they, they mess with my cameras. They come in whenever, you know, a lot of times at night. This woman picked up a camera we had on a nest and she moved it. Unfortunately, she didn't take it. Yep, there she goes. So we found this camera like far away from the nest, pointed to nothing and we, we missed the nest hatching. So like I said, luckily she didn't steal it, but we have lost a lot of cameras. This is of course in the north habitat, closest to the, to the encampments. So that's where we get all, most of our cameras stolen. So that really hurts our ability to do our job because we can't, we can't use cameras if we're worried about them being stolen. So we either get no data whatsoever or, you know, we risk losing our equipment. So this has been a real problem for us. And they also target predator exposures. So here's a, a nest, there's the eggs right there. And what happened to one particular nest last year, the predator's exposure was removed. They dug a trench, like the footprint of the exposure and then this stick, of course, the eggs were taken. The stick was put in it. Here's a close-up of the stick. I know it's hard to read, but it says Mia and then parentheses, the eggs. So I don't know if that's my eggs or Mia who took the eggs, but, um, that's also a real problem for us because if we're having issues with ravens taking eggs and we have to worry about humans targeting nests that have exposures on it, we're kind of like, there's no way we can win. Um, we put an exposure on a nest and a human takes the eggs or we leave it off and we risk a, a raven who are very good at finding nests. And if they're in the area, they will find the nest. So that puts us in a real difficult, difficult situation and really, you know, there's, there's just no win. Oh yeah, and this is just a screenshot from a video. This fellow, uh, we had a guy who walked through in the middle of the habitat that's closed, uh, with his bike. And here he is, he stopped his bike and he's actually looking into this nest where the eggs are. Fortunately, he didn't touch them and he did see the camera, he didn't take the camera. But I think this guy has taken our cameras before. Again, these guys are really hard to catch. If I called the police, you know, eight o'clock in the morning on a Sunday, I called the police, I mean, chances of catching this guy are, are slim to none. So it's a real, it's a real challenge for us. We're hoping to get more volunteers on the beach, more eyes on the beach so we can report these things. And so that kind of brings me almost to the end. The, the, what I'm hoping is to get the word out and to try to convince dog owners to obey dog ordinances. And I know they love walking their dogs on the beach. And, you know, I want to say for the record, Ventura Audubon really supports the dog beach, just not a dog beach where we've got endangered birds that are breeding and are impacted by, by the presence of dogs. Um, and I know that's a sticky situation and we want to work with the police as much as we can. Recently, we've been having issues with horses on the beach. There were horses, um, I think it was last weekend or the weekend before. They're a big problem. Uh, they destroy habitat and they'll never see nests. And, um, then they introduce weed seeds to the beach. And, um, of course, anyone who can call, who sees an ATV and calls the police, the, the more information we have on them, the better. Last year, I asked for parking passes and Wainimi was great. They gave us parking passes and then COVID came and the parking lots all got shut down because the beach was closed. So unfortunately, we didn't really get to benefit from the parking pla- passes last year. We'd like to try to get them again this year. I think this year's going to be much better. It's really helpful for us to be able to park at the Wainimi, um, beach park parking. It saves us a lot of time and effort, um, to do our jobs. And then just get the word out, I'd love to get the word out about our volunteer naturalist training. Even if people can't serve shifts on the beach, it's really interesting training and it, and it, I think it's eye-opening. And the more training we can do, the more exposure we can give people for what's going on, I think the more they appreciate it. We, we do want to start doing bilingual training and even bilingual tours. We're, we're looking, we have budget to hire two interns. We're hoping to get a bilingual, uh, Spanish-speaking intern so we can start developing that program. And, um, finally, I just want to thank people, um, our sponsors who, who have really helped our program go. All of these groups have given us money. I want to, um, also thank Chief Salinas. Um, he helped us a lot last year. And, uh, HBC and- And HBC and Stuff Masters gave us donations that really, really helped us out. I want to thank Beth, Beth, in, in particular for, for her help. She was very generous last year. And that's it. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Perez.
Okay, sorry, I had a problem with my button. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and I just had a question. I recently saw that the Audubon was awarded a one million dollar grant. And I was curious as to what your plans are with that.
Well, I wish it was Audubon who had been given that grant. It was actually the Nature Conservancy. And we do have a little tiny bit of that grant that's going to help pay us to do extra nest monitoring. And it'll also give us some money to spend more time on the beach doing habitat protection. So we're going to increase our hours patrolling the fences and repairing fences. And there'll be, I think there's some budget in there for, for supplies. But, and it's also a three-year grant too. So it's a million dollars spread out over three years. So it, it's maybe not quite as, as much of a watershed as what it sounds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins.
Uh, yes, I, I want to thank you and all the volunteers for doing your, your best to try to save these endangered speeches, species for our future generations. I had a couple, just a variety of questions. Like with this pandemic, have you been able to do any kind of Zoom training or anything like that to solicit more volunteers and more education to the public?
So we did a lot better last year than we had anticipated. I mean, once March came and we were in complete shutdown, we thought we were done for the summer. We didn't know what was going to happen. But we did convert our training into a Zoom session. So that, that worked really well. But then the real, you know, problem was getting people on the beach. I mean, we could not, especially when the beach was closed. And we could not ask people to go out and, you know, and engage. I mean, up to then, we had been really focused on outreach. So we gave, we worked a lot with locals who would go to the beach anyway. So they were able to do fence repair as they were walking the beach. As the summer went on and things eased, it was, it was much better. We just have to be really careful about engaging with beach, beachgoers. I mean, we've got social distancing and masks. But still, we want to keep our volunteers safe. And of course, everybody has to sign COVID releases and do a health check. So it's, it's, we had nine hundred hours of volunteers on the beach last year, which was really, I thought, quite an accomplishment. So hopefully this year, that, with that gone, we'll be, we'll do much better. But yeah, it was definitely a challenge.
Is there a period of time which is the most sensitive time for their survival? Is it like, is there like a, a certain month of the year or whatever that is the most sensitive, that perhaps you need the most volunteers?
Yeah, so really, we get the most. So we, I forgot to mention that we do have our first, did I mention that? We have our first plover nest already. So that will hatch in a month. So it's really once we have chicks on the beach that it's the most sensitive. So for plovers, they'll start, we'll start getting chicks in about the end of April. And then May, it really comes on and you start having a lot of nests hatching. So really between May and July. Because then we also have, are these terns come in and their, their, their season's much shorter. They also, they kind of wrap up by, by August. But the, the, the sensitive time for terns is going to be June, July. So probably those three months. And of course, it really, it corresponds almost perfectly with school being out of session, the time when it's going to be the busiest. Our college students go away, so that's sort of, that's sort of a problem. We work very closely with Cal State Channel Highlands. But in May, you know, they all go back home. So we lose a lot of our, our volunteers that we had in the spring. So yeah, it's definitely a challenge. So we really need to do a better job getting the word out and trying to attract more people to come to our program in the summertime.
Is, is the survival rate toughest when they're in the egg stage or when they're in the hatchling stages?
So for snowy plovers, it's the first two weeks of life. So by, between the time they hatch to the time they're two weeks old, they're still very downy, they're still, they have to brood underneath their parents. So if they're disturbed a lot, they spend a lot of energy keeping warm. They spend a lot of energy running away instead of focusing on feeding. So they, they weaken very quickly. And they have to run to keep up with their, with their family group. So if they can't run to keep up, then, then they just, they don't make it. So that's when we lose most of them.
So I picked up dogs are a no-no. But in a perfect world, what would you do to make it the survival rate and to make these species flourish more?
Really, it would be to, to decrease the amount of disturbance they're having at the tideline. And you know, really, it's, it's dogs. And that one corner of the lagoon, it, it's been a huge problem for us with all the traffic from the encampments coming and going. And of course, our fences, fences being stolen. So just if people would obey, you know, just, just the ordinances, the ones that we already have. We don't need new ordinances, just, just the rules we already have that are, have been put in place to protect these species. If we could just get people to adhere to that. We're doing really well. It's just, it's just this issue we're having with chicks. And we've got the nesting that will support it. And we just need to increase our survival.
I'm assuming that this area has been said, is this an official kind of sanctuary? Or is it not? I don't know.
So it's, it's designated snowy plover habitat. It's an ESHA. So it's an environmentally sensitive habitat area. So that's a designation from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Beyond that, well, it's, and it's also considered a globally important bird area. So it's not just this species. And I didn't have a lot of time in this, this presentation to go into it. But there are like thirty, thirty species that are either endangered or at risk of becoming endangered that are dependent on these dunes. And that's Ormond Beach and, and also the adjacent Magoo. Of course, what's really cool about this area is that they're connected. And even though we see a big fence on the beach between us and Magoo, these animals do not. And, and the habitat over Magoo is great. So they feed back and forth. I mean, we have nesting right on the other side of the, of the Magoo fence. And we know we get an exchange of birds between the two locations. So yeah, it's, it's not designated yet, but that might change. It certainly is for Ventura County. It's one of the few places that really have natural dunes and it's not backed by housing or commercial development. So it is a truly amazing place.
Yeah, we just have to hope one year that Armin wetlands become a reality for real.
I know, I know. It seems like it's going to take a long time, but we are working on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator Martinez.
Hi Cynthia, thank you so much for the presentation.
Sure.
I, I think a, a better fence would be a good idea. But I really wanted to talk about the volunteering. So the training that you have, is that free training? Or does one have to pay for that?
It's free. We, we have a variety of grants that pays for our volunteer coordinator and supplies. So that's a really important part of our program. And it's something we've been able to find funding for. Because anything that, that involves bringing the community, especially disadvantaged community to the beach, has been, you know, it's, it's been easier for us to find funding for. So I foresee that going for quite a while. We do, we need to make it more bilingual. And we need to reach out to more of the local, local communities around Ormond Beach. So that's our goals for the next couple of years.
And how often is that training available?
So we train, for now, we're doing it once a month. And we have signups on our website. I can put our website URL in the chat.
Yeah, venturaaudubon.org?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. If you just go in to get involved, there's a volunteer naturalist link.
Okay. And if anybody wanted to reach out to you, what would be the easiest way to get ahold of you?
Um, I can, I can put my email also in the chat.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez, do you have another question? No, no more questions. Thank you. You, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Gama. Thank you Cynthia for your excellent presentation. I always enjoy the information you bring to us about what's going on with the least turn and the snowy plovers and, and that area of Ormond Beach. My question for you is what are the fines for violating a snowy plover vest or even a least turn vest, nest?
So that's, the, so it's, it's a little different because snowy plovers are federally protected and California least turns are state, state protected.
Okay.
And it gets very complicated because the rules are different between whether it's state or federal. For federal, the rules are much stricter. If you, if you cause a snowy plover, and this is, it's very difficult to prosecute, of course. If you cause a snowy plover to flush from a nest, that's considered take. Take is, I believe it's up to a hundred thousand dollar fine or a year in prison. That's what they say. But you would have to prosecute that. And you'd have to have someone willing to prosecute that from Fish and Wildlife Service. We are starting a dialogue with the enforcement officers from Fish and Wildlife Service, if nothing else, to get them to be a little more responsive or to start engaging with our local police for enforcement. For least turns, it's, take has to be, you actually have to have evidence of killing a bird or stepping on a nest. And we've come very close with that. We've had a lot of problems with homeless. One year, we had three nests run over by a bike. You know, pushing their bikes through the sand, they just run right over the nest. And I tried to call Cal Tips to get help. And because I could not give, tell them who actually did this or I didn't have a, like a video or a picture of it happening, I was unable to, to pursue that. So it's, the fines sound awful, but it's very difficult to, to pursue.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was, has the city ever donated money to the Audubon Society? You mentioned that you have different sponsors. Have we ever given you any money to, for your efforts?
Um, I've not gotten anything from, from the city. I've, I mean, I, the, Chief Salinas helped a lot with reaching out to the, to the cannabis dispensaries last year. And so, I mean, that was hugely helpful. But other than that, nothing, nothing really local.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for the good work and thank you to your volunteers. I'm an aspiring amateur bird watcher, so I just adore birds and.
Oh, you should, yeah, you should come out with us.
I am very interested in participating in training and coming out. So thank you.
Yeah, check out our training. It's kind of cool because we talk a lot about life history and that sort of thing. And also just dune ecology, which is, which is interesting if you like the beach. But check out our field trips. Because every now and then we'll do a field trip at Ormond and it's something I want to get going more, just to be birding at Ormond Beach. So I think you would enjoy that.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Again, I thank you very much for the detailed presentation. And I think I speak for all the council members that the city of Port Waynimi is willing and able to help in any way we can. And a couple of things that maybe we could consider. Bobby Martinez is more comfortable speaking Spanish and maybe we could volunteer him to, to, what, the training of Spanish speakers. I also think that perhaps our community center could fill the void when the college students go home. And maybe we could develop some kind of volunteer effort to, to help work towards these goals of minimizing the disruption, the bikes, the dogs. And perhaps a really nice, beautiful sign right on the border of where Waynimi Beach meets Ormond. If we had a really nice sign that details, you know, the, the three priorities for the people walking out there. I, I, I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to say it's okay to have a dog if it's on a leash because there is a dog ban on the beach. And so maybe we could come back at some point and talk about ways to enforce or ways to, to get information to keep people on the right track. And I know there's a lot of people that come out with binoculars. They're very sensitive to the, to the, the rules of the road out there. And then it, it is absolutely infuriating to see these people on motorcycles coming in and around there. And it also, and again, when dogs are running around, it's, it's, you know, the dog's best day of his life, but he's disturbing nests and we, and we can't have that. So maybe we could think about these things. Maybe we could, to get a, a training going in the city of Port Waynimi at our community center. So.
We've been talking about doing a shorter training. Instead of doing like a three hour, maybe do more of, you know, a, a training light. Something that's, that might, we might be able to get more people to come to just to expose them to the concepts and maybe cut down on some of the more technical stuff.
Yeah, well, your efforts are appreciated. It's, it's, it's great. And, and you know, that owl, I think I know where that owl nest, the owl turned to its nest from last year. And it's a big, big owl.
Yeah, that was down on the, on the, closer to the Magoo end of the beach.
Oh, but they, yeah, they travel quite, they're, they're true, right? Obviously, okay, well.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to help too, just, just for the record.
Okay, yeah, that's awesome. I'll, I'll circle back with you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. We appreciate the work you're doing. And you know, Waynimi Beach is a really special place. And then it, it turned into Ormond Beach. And as we can see, you know, borders don't matter when it comes to what we're trying to do in, in protecting our environment. And for that, we thank you very much.
All right, awesome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to move on to number three, Arbor Day proclamation. Charles Cable, are you on Zoom with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Great. Okay, I have a proclamation here honoring Arbor Day in the city of Port Waynimi. And I can go ahead and read the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. This proclamation is honoring Arbor Day in the city of Port Waynimi. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And now, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce wind and water erosion of our precious topsoil, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, encampments, other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the city council of Port Waynimi hereby proclaim the first Thursday in April is Arbor Day in the city of Port Waynimi. And all citizens urged to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. We urge all citizens to plant and care for our trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations for Arbor Day.
Thank you. Will there be a tree planting this year like we did last year and the previous year?
Yes, there will be a tree planting this Thursday. And last year, you participated, we did it in front of the museum. You and Councilmember Rollins. We got some pictures, that was just before COVID. This year, we're going to do a live event, a Facebook live event. And we're going to plant a strawberry tree in Waynimu Park. We're looking to do this at ten thirty AM. And it's a Arbuthis munendo tree. And there used to be a strawberry tree there years ago and it was, it failed. So we're going to replant that one and bring it back. And it's a nice tree that has several different color, red and, and yellow fruits. I do have a flyer that we're going to distribute on our Facebook and our city website.
Thank you. Thank you very much for reading of the proclamation of Arbor Day. And that, that's going to be on, what, what's the date of that again?
That'll be April eighth, ten thirty AM.
That's Thursday, this Thursday at ten thirty AM at Waynu, Waynimu Park?
Yes. And this proclamation also keeps us within our Tree City USA designation. We need about four, to qualify to become a Tree City USA, we need to meet four requirements. And that's to have a municipal tree.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Any comments or questions from council or staff? Hello?
No.
I just want to say thank you, Charles, for keeping up the designation for. I just want to say thank you, um, Charles, for keeping up the um, the designation for us. I think it's very important um to to have that designation for our city. You know, anything that's gonna make us, you know, attractive and and it does beautify our city. So um, really appreciate your your work in putting this together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, anyone else for a comment for Arbor Day? My screen changed, so I'm having trouble seeing um my colleagues.
I apologize. My my laptop died, so I'm using um Dawn's phone now, so, and that may be why.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item number four, Autistic Awareness Month. I can't see myself, but I want you all to see my shirt. And um, I'm wearing this T-shirt for my nephew, Sonny Lozano. He has a team that participates in ought to run every um time they have the ought to run. And uh, his team is called Sunny Like the Day and of which I am proud member. And uh, in in Sonny's honor, I'm wearing his shirt today. And uh, Sonny, if you're out there, you know that we love you very much and we look forward to walking with you into the future and um, a very long future for that matter. And with that, I'd like to ask Chief Salinas to talk about more what we're doing to honor Autism Awareness Month.
Sure. Um, so once again, the Port Weneme Police Department is doing all that it can to bring more awareness about autism in the month of April. Uh, we will be coordinating a few events this month along with participating in our Autism Patch Program, where all the funds will be donated to the Autism Society of Ventura County. As you can see here uh by my patch on my uniform. And in fact, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna screen share right now because I do have something to show everyone. And hopefully, let's see here. And so here's a, here's a closer upfront image of that patch that is now on our uniforms. Uh, all our officers wear those patches along with our community service officers during the month of April to promote uh greater awareness. Um, and we also outfitted, as you can see there on the bottom, one of our police units uh with the autism logo. And you'll see that being driven around the city during the entire month of April as well. Uh, along with that, you can see uh a flyer on the, on this, let's see here. I'm trying to get, there we go. Uh, there's the flyer I was talking about. Uh, so during the month of April, uh, we will be raising funds for Autism Awareness Month, uh, where we'll be selling shirts. Uh, you can see that on your screen as well as patches and stickers. Uh, and our goal is to reach twenty-five hundred dollars uh for the month of April. Anyone listening or following us can actually go onto our Facebook page and find the link and information they need to purchase these items. Um, and so we have also created an ought to run team, just like Mayor Gama uh just indicated earlier. Uh, well, there's our our police unit that I I made reference to. Um, it actually looks pretty nice. The puzzle pieces there go all the way around the unit. Um, we also created an ought to run team, which again raises funds for the Autism Society. Uh, we are off and running. Um, our goal is twenty-five hundred dollars. As you can see, we've already raised uh roughly two hundred and sixty dollars, so we're ten percent of the way now. Uh, something that we also confirmed today, uh, and will be making public tomorrow, we will be doing Coffee with a Cop at the local Starbucks in Port Weneme this Thursday, April eighth, beginning at seven AM and concluded at nine AM. Uh, we will be posted outdoors greeting customers along with selling our great autism merchandise here uh to the public. Uh, this is very similar to the event we held um, actually in two thousand nineteen now, uh, where we sold patches and met with the public for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And then to uh, one of the additional events that we'll have uh in April will be uh an autism event in the city of Ventura, where we'll have a booth supporting this cause as well. Uh, we will be sending out more details about this event on our social media pages as they become available as we just confirmed this spot. And so with that, I thank everyone for their support. And I'll uh pass this off to Mayor Gama so he can read the autism proclamation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, again, I just want to shout out to Sonny Lozano, Team Sunny Like the Day. Um, we love you and uh we look forward to supporting you and and your team members. Autism Awareness Awareness Month, April twenty twenty-one. Whereas April is designated as Autism Awareness Month. And whereas autism, also known as Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, represents a broad group of disorders that vary widely from mild to severe and is characterized by difficulty with social interaction, communication, severely limited interest, and repetitive behaviors. And whereas the CDC determined that approximately one in fifty-four children is diagnosed with an Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, boys are four times more likely to be diagnosed with autism than girls. Most children were still being diagnosed after age four, though autism can be reliably diagnosed as early as age two. And whereas the lifelong nature of ASD and other developmental disabilities require a variety of types of assistance at different points in an individual's life. And whereas our understanding of autism has grown tremendously since it was first diagnosed, as there is no known cure for autism, early diagnosis and the resulting appropriate educational intervention are vital to the future growth and development of the individual. Whereas a variety of public and private organizations and agencies strive to provide quality care, support, or services to children and adults with ASD to enable them to live as independently as possible and to reach their full potential. And whereas hope lies in a broad spectrum of and in an informed public and community committed to providing support and service to individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorders. And whereas the city, whereas the Port Weneme Police Department will wear customized autism police patches as an outward expression of an inner commitment to connect with our community, to create awareness and to support those dealing with this lifelong neurological disorder. And whereas we join the Autism Society of Ventura County in proclaiming April twenty twenty-one as Autism Awareness Month. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of Port Weneme hereby recognizes and proclaims April twenty-one as Autism Awareness Month. I want to also say that one of the best fundraising events that I've ever went to was the ought to run at um Cal State University Channel Islands. And I'm pretty sure it's not happening this year, but we're gonna keep our eye on next year. And um, if you get a chance, just kind of keep that in your mind. And if you get a chance to participate, it truly is one of the greatest fundraising events in all of Ventura County. And uh, for that, I am grateful to Chief Salinas and his, because he's been a supporter of this for many years, as with the Weneme Police Department and others in the community of of um Oxnard and Ventura County. So uh, thank you, everyone who supports this worthy cause, much appreciated. Anybody like to make a comment? Okay, Mr. uh Mayor Pro Tem Rollins.
Uh, yes, I I feel proud of the city of Port Weneme for uh supporting uh this effort. Um, I know my former life as like an area director for the West Side Special Olympics, I saw firsthand how the various different support and the therapies and working with these individuals showed mass improvement. And uh, in many cases, uh, they were able to uh live very fruitful lives and support their communities. So uh, applauding to everybody in the Port Weneme community for supporting this.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rollins. Anyone else? Okay, well, um, again, uh, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing of community service and community involvement. And um, one thing I could say about the city of Port Weneme, not only it is a great place to retire, but it's a great place to participate in community service. So thank you for leading that that effort. Okay, we are now gonna move on to Chief Salinas in a presentation regarding COVID nineteen. We're getting to the end of these, Chief, I can feel it, I see it. I've got my second vaccination. Real good.
I also see the light at the end of the tunnel. And so I do have uh mostly a great deal of good news to share with everyone today. This will be a quick COVID update, as I hope everyone has been uh keeping an eye on what's been happening not only in Ventura County, but in the state of California. Uh, so let me go over to share screen real quick so I can share a few things with everyone here this evening. Okay, so I'll get right to the numbers. Uh, I like to present this uh every meeting. And so as you can see here, just jumping right to the April fifth meeting today, these are the numbers that were released earlier this afternoon. Uh, we are doing very well in the city of Port Weneme. We only have twelve active cases. Uh, we haven't seen that since uh the summer of twenty twenty. And as you can remember, we peaked at five hundred and fifty-one active cases in our city. And in fact, right now, the county of Ventura only has five hundred and five active cases in the county. Uh, and then as you can see, as you can compare the previous two dates, uh, our ICU bed capacity has increased uh very slowly. So now we're at thirty-one point two uh percent. And so moving on to the next slide. Uh, this is another slide I want to point out. The slide you see at the top was where we were at the last meeting. You can see where it says Friday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, you see the graph or the chart right below it, which is Monday, April fifth, that's today. And the numbers I do want you to focus on are the numbers I have circled here. Uh, you can see what a dramatic drop uh we've had. We've actually dropped into the orange tier at three point nine uh of infections per one hundred thousand people. And then as you can see, our positivity rate almost dropped in half to one point eight percent where it was at at three point five percent. So uh, if these numbers maintain, uh which we hope they will, uh, they maintain through tomorrow. On Wednesday, we will be dropped down to the uh orange tier, uh, which will lighten uh some more of the restrictions across the county. And I'll get to that uh in a later slide here. Um, right now, what I'd like to do is just quickly talk about vaccinations. As you can see by the date on this chart, it's um up to date. And as you can see, as we started, uh, there was a lot of dark blue on the bottom. And where we want to be is you want to see both dark blue and uh light blue uh on the screen where they share about fifty percent of the bar, and that's where we're at now. So we are progressing very, very well uh in the uh county. And in fact, today, uh, they actually had open vaccination shots uh for those who were qualified uh without an appointment over at Oxnard College today between the hours of twelve and three. And so uh, we are able to get a lot more vaccinations out, as you can see here by this chart. So so far in the county, uh, we are forty-three point eight percent of our population has received the first dose. Uh, there has been nearly a half a million doses already administered. And if you don't know, our county is about eight hundred and fifty thousand people. Uh, so we are doing very, very well. And so that is good to see, as you can see the chart here on the bottom as well, where we're just slowly increasing uh and actually putting out nearly eight thousand vaccinations every day here in the county of Ventura. Uh, so with that, uh, people are still um ages fifty and older are allowed to go get vaccinations right now, uh, unless you have some sort of underlying health condition. And if that's the case, anyone over the ages sixteen is currently uh eligible. But beginning on April eighteenth, all appointments will open up to anyone over the age of sixteen years of age and older. Uh, so that uh is very good to see. And so uh, on this path, we're hoping to have everyone vaccinated by early June or sometime in June, especially now that we have the Johnson and Johnson uh one-dose shot currently available uh to us. And so as you heard me made uh mention earlier, uh, if we maintain where we're at on April seventh at twelve oh one AM, we will move from the red tier down to the orange tier uh and currently share this level with the county of Los Angeles and county, uh, and Orange County as well. So what does that mean for us if we move to the orange tier uh beginning on the seventh? As you can see by all the modifications that'll change here, so I selected the ones that really um are relevant to the city of Port Weneme, such as restaurants will open uh to fifty percent indoor capacity. Uh, shopping centers uh will open up indoors at full capacity. Uh, youth sports uh will open up uh quite a bit. And if people want to find out more information on this, they can go to the state's website and learn more about uh what outdoor activities are now allowed. Uh, fitness centers and gyms uh will now be able to open indoor at a twenty-five percent max occupancy, uh, as well as bars, um, where no meals are served. And then uh something there on the bottom, you can see where they are now going to be allowing live audiences at indoor and outdoor events. Uh, and I myself have tickets to an outdoor event uh as the Dodger season is opening up here uh this week. And so uh, with the tier levels now changing, uh, you're gonna see a lot of these conditions lightening and people getting back to business. Uh, but this is, should be a strong reminder that we all still need to do what we can to help limit the spread of COVID. And that's wearing our masks, uh washing our hands, and still trying to maintain six feet of social distancing out in public. And this is just a reminder that the deadline is in fact tomorrow for those who want to apply for the Business Assistance Grant Program here in Ventura County. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If anyone should have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief Salinas. Any questions for Chief? Mayor Pro Tem Rollins. You're muted, sir.
Thank you, Chief, for this exciting news. I think like the community is ready to get out there and be normal again. I I detailed, uh, as far as the different tier levels go, uh, as we move forward, what is the poss- wh- wh- how would a Weneme Beach Festival, if we were to operate it, run if we were in an orange tier and if we were in a yellow tier? Uh, how how do you perceive that operating um as far as restrictions or no restrictions? And is there a tier after yellow tier?
Uh, so we will be going down to orange. And so right now, that would enable us to be at fifty percent, fifty, five zero percent capacity for an outdoor event. And that will go even lower once we get to that yellow tier. And it'll also be balanced and increased based on the number of vaccinations that we have in the county of Ventura. So given the path that we're currently on, if we get everyone in the county of Ventura or all those that want or choose to be vaccinated by by this summer, which would be June, July the latest, uh, an August Weneme Beach Festival is very much uh in the cards and possible uh because our county will be uh completely vaccinated.
Boy, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rollins. Are there any other questions or comments for Chief Salinas? Having seen none, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the con- consent agenda. Um, I'm gonna read the items. Item number six, approve the minutes of the city council for the regular meeting of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one and the special meeting of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Item number seven, receive and file the finance cash disbursements from March ninth, twenty twenty-one through March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. May I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Uh, before we move to, uh, I would like, I have a couple of questions on the disbursement records. Um, so uh, can we take a roll call vote for item number six, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Item number six is going to approve.
Thank you. In regards to dispersments, I always try to take a look at these and make sense of it. And excuse me if I have been advised before on this, but on page number seven, there are some dispersments recorded to the First Baptist Church of $750. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, approximately 13 dispersments. And they all have the same check number and the same, well, not the same invoice number, but they all have the same check number. So I think I brought this up before, and I can't recall the explanation. And is it a system glitch or what's the deal?
Mayor Gama, if you look at the description, it'll show you the month that they apply to.
Okay.
So that means that multiple months rent payment for using the parking lot across the street from City Hall is recorded in those one checks.
Okay, so it's a check number and then it's.
Right, like you'll notice there's two February 21 services, one that is the 447 fund and one that is the 444 fund. So because it's split across different account numbers, it has to list those, that same, it'll have the same invoice reference, same amount. So it's probably $1,500 a month, and that is split up between those two funds.
Okay. All right, and then, and I'm sorry for clogging up the meeting time. I just, there's one other one that stuck out that I thought was kind of interesting. It was a $300,000 payment to, but it's probably the, I don't know. Let's see here. Here it is. Rush Truck Center. Check number is the same for equal amounts of $318,000.
Where are you, which which page are you on?
That's page 33. So again, I think I understand you saying that the charges are being split between possibly two separate enterprise funds.
Well, if it has two different account numbers, that's definitely the case. It will be split across two different account numbers. It can also be split if it is going across different project codes, which is in that kind of middle column there between the account number and the invoice number.
Okay, so so it says check number 124218, $318,097.1. So is that one check with that amount or is it?
It's one check. So the total of that check would be the combined sum of those two $318,000 checks.
So we paid $636,000 to the Rush Truck Center.
For a solid waste vehicle, so that's probably a trash truck, which is, I would guess, without researching our most expensive equipment item that we have.
Is it one or two? Because there's two invoice numbers. Again, to be able to to read these and understand what exactly it means.
Yeah, that's why I can tell you who it's going to, but I couldn't tell you if it's one vehicle or two or three. I would be surprised if a trash truck was under 200,000 apiece. So it could be two.
200,000, you know, so it must be two. I mean.
Yeah, I purchased one in another city about 15 years ago, and it was 238,000 for that one. And that was just a standard trash truck.
Okay.
Charles Cable Public Works, we did have two solid waste vehicles delivered last month.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions from council members?
I have a question. You know, how, I mean, like me just looking at it from like a business perspective and just looking at this sometimes, like, I mean, as a city council member, I feel the responsibility to, you know, just to go through this, even though I know it's not my job and I believe Ken and everybody in the finance department does a pretty good job. But I always kind of feel like some of the descriptions are kind of vague, and sometimes I don't know exactly what they are. And I don't know with me always working on like Google Docs and creating hyperdocs, like I always think, like, I think it'd be pretty cool, at least for some of those like bigger purchases, like to see like a link where it can take you to, you know, I don't know. It would, I'm just saying, like, this is me, like, ideal world. I think it'd be pretty cool to see exactly what it was like, you know, like just right now, how we saw like, we know, we don't know if it was one trash truck or two trash trucks. And it's just a little confusing, like, I mean, I think this is information that not everybody wants to see, but people that want to see it should be able to see it and should be able to understand it and just make sense of it, like, okay, what is, what is this expense? Because sometimes the descriptions, like, like the vendors and the description, like, it, it's really difficult to see. And so sometimes it's like, okay, so how far do we go into it and like actually try to like manage all these expenses?
You know, Ken, I think we had this conversation before Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember Perez were sworn in. I think the detail, the informational aspect of this is being addressed by a system upgrade or something to that effect. Is that true?
Yeah, this would, this would be an old horse that I've been kind of riding since I got here, that this, the software system that we have is not very user friendly. The information that's in there, like, why I was able to look at it, and it says SW vehicle. That's one of my staff members that puts in there. So it reminds us that's solid waste, you know. So a lot of these things, we're trying to use workarounds to get this kind of information out. But, you know, in newer systems that are out there that are going to be quite expensive, they're going to have a pretty extensive ability to track that kind of thing. But usually, we're just trying to give a method of tracing in all dispersments into the overall city budget. So really, if somebody was looking for that kind of information, that's where it would be discussed is in the budget. And these kind of breakdown to support the budget, that's why there's no action taken by council. It's really just receive and file.
Right. Councilmember Martinez, do you have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, no, so Ken, you were saying that I think you guys just need like some, some better software. That's pretty much it, right? That's kind of what you're saying.
Well, we're looking at a new enterprise resource planning software program. So it would give better, better reports rather than ones that we have to kind of format and export the data to get into these, these types of dispersment reports. But it, it really, any, any of that kind of detailed information that you, you were talking about would have to be created because it's not available in the system.
Yeah, no, it's just, I just think since I'm, I'm pretty good at creating Google Docs, hyperdocs. But I know this is, this is different, right? Like you guys generate this from like some other programs, some software. So I think it'd be cool for you guys to get that upgrade. But that's pretty much it, just because, I don't know, I, I still don't necessarily understand my role in terms of looking at the finances. Because I mean, we approve them, you know, but I do like how Gama, you know, kind of like, you know, saw like not necessarily a red flag, but he saw some things like, hey, you know, just curious and wanting to know, you know, hey, what's, what's up with this big expense? Just because he cares about making sure that we do a good job of taking care of the money in the city. But yeah, no, I think, I think everything's good, just.
The more information, the better, I think, is what is kind of the nexus here. Councilmember Perez, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was curious about all the outgoing expenses that we put out for temp agency. Having worked in the temp field and working for personal agencies, I know they have huge fees on top of what we pay or what the employee gets paid. Why are we not looking to fill those permanently instead of going through a really expensive temp agency?
The city manager, we are attacking both contract and temps, but this is off the agenda. And I'm going to ask that we move forward.
Are there any other questions? Mayor Prokam Rollins.
One of the things, Mr. McDonald, that you had mentioned is council approval. Is there some kind of amounts that we make official approval? I know we approved the budget at the beginning of the year, but like for major expenses, are there some kind of limits as to when we do get involved? Like Councilman Martinez said, that we actually actively decide whether we want to. I know in the past years, there's been certain items that have come up that we would actually approve the, you know, the expenditure and other things that seem very large amounts that we really just kind of passively approve. And so are there some kind of limits or when are we involved and when are we not involved?
Well, mainly what we're dealing with here is the dispersment list. So this is just a receive and file. It's kind of just giving you the information. So there's no approval in that. The approvals that you were kind of talking to would be more like contract approvals, like our NG project and some of those kind of bigger things. But those aren't really going to be involved in the dispersment list. They're going to be separate actions that will deal with the purchasing policy of the city.
Okay.
This is, this is Don Villafon. If I may add something, next council meeting, I will be coming forth to the city council to award a contract for the resurfacing of Ventura Road from Sunkist to Channel Islands Boulevard. So there's an example of where we went out to bid, we got, we followed, you know, government contracting code, and then I'm coming to the council to award that contract. And those, those are all non-general fund monies. Typically, those are gas tax funds. But there's an example of where we'd be coming to council, asking for award of a contract and giving the specific amount.
Thank you. The other, it was something earlier that was mentioned, is that church that we rent the parking from, are they paid up to date? Or are they, how often are they paid? Are they paid on a monthly basis? Are they paid on every six months? How are they paid? I, I know that, you know, I've been, some of them have reached out to me because of the pandemic. They depend on this rental. And so I just wanted to know, are they paid monthly or are they up to date? That type of thing.
Yeah, I, I'm not involved in the details of that account. I mean, I would guess by what was in the transaction that Mayor Gama and I was discussing. I think it was three months. So it could, if that was the case, it would be every, every three months, every quarter. I'm, I'm pretty sure if my memory is correct, the agreement had a monthly amount. So it would be, it would be monthly at a minimum. But I'm not sure if they send an invoice and, you know, we prepare it and do it that way.
So which, which department administers that contract?
That's Public Works, Councilman Rollins. Fred Camarrio, he negotiated that contract. He and Rod Butler went back and forth and, and got consensus. And then it was awarded because we knew there were going to be multiple projects at City Hall, the NG project, and then currently we're doing ADA interior upgrades. So that was the need for that.
Excuse me, we are again drifting from this agenda item.
Agenda item is the dispersment records. And are there any other questions regarding the dispersment records? I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven of the consent calendar.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Prokam Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passed with unanimous.
Thank you. We are now moving on to public hearings. Item number eight, adoption of a resolution granting special use permit number 01-21 for the, from the Earth Cannabis Farmers Market event. The hearing is now open at 8:55 p.m. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Having seen none, Madam Clerk, do you have proof of the publication as required by law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Will staff please present the report? I believe Tony Stewart, Community Development Director, will give the report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gama. Good evening, mayor, council, staff and audience. This is a request from, from the Earth or FTE to hold what they call the beach parking lot C. The date would be May 30th, 2021. Kristy, if you could. There's who's currently products at From the Earth, their dispensary would be on the site, basically introducing the, their products to the customers. There will be no onsite consumption. Vendors will not have product on hand either. They'll only tell attendees about the product. And similar to the, the recent wheelhouse event, the attendees, if they do wish to purchase a product, will do so at the From the Earth booths. There'll also be a DJ setup next to it, just to provide some music during the event. Next slide, please. So all of the items will be stored in the vault in the From the Earth booth area. This will be make it odor free and secure. There'll be a total of five guards, one at the, well, two actually at the booth. One of them will be armed. Attendees will be checked in by a guard at the interest of Lot C. There'll be one guard roaming the parking lot during the event and then one at their rear emergency exit. The event will need to comply with all COVID restrictions. And as I mentioned in the staff report, the applicants are hoping that the attendees will park in our paid parking areas and be able to walk through the event. However, if we're still basically closed to festivals at the time the event occurs, then it'll be a drive-through event or it'll need to be a drive-through event, similar to the way the wheelhouse event was the other week. FTE's point of sale system is going to track all the sales, and 5% of the gross revenues will go towards the city's general fund. Next slide, please. The aerial site plan basically showing from the applicant, they propose layout where folks will come in and the sales booth is kind of towards the exit with the DJ next to it. Next slide, please. And as I've mentioned in previous events, special use permits are required because this event is being proposed at the beach park and our local coastal program requires it. Project is exempt under CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, because it's a temporary use. Next slide, please. Next slide, Chris, thank you. So as I mentioned, a minimum 5% of the sales will go towards the city's general fund. There'll also be revenue from the use of the city's paid parking spaces, not only the ones that the applicant will prepaid for, but also the ones that the attendees use. And the applicant will also be responsible for any costs incurred by city staff and resources. And next slide, please. So it is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution that conditionally approves the special use permit number 01-21. And that concludes my presentation. The applicants, Dan Eisenstein and David Moss from From the Earth are here to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Does council have any questions at staff? Having hearing, Councilmember Martinez, was that your hand or?
Yeah, so with the new tier being changed, I guess, just recently, I guess, Chief Salinas said it'd be changed this Wednesday. Is that what's going to allow them to basically have it open to the public? And is there going to be a limit of people that are going to be able to be on the, at the event?
That's a very good question. So we're waiting to hear from the, the county on. So we're waiting to hear from the county on what they will be allowing through the orange tier. Frankly, we're a little surprised that they ban festival events now. But we should see at least some loosening, but I'm not sure exactly how loose that will become with the orange tier. And hopefully by the end of May, maybe we'll advance to the yellow tier or even the green tier. They do come up with that statewide. So there's still quite a bit of a wiggle room between now and the event where a lot can be loosened as long as we continue on the track that we are on.
So when would we be able to know how many people would actually be allowed in, in that area in parking lot C?
Again, it's probably going to be close to the event time. Like I said, it's just, it's, there are so many unknowns. So that's why the staff report reads the way it is because again, we're not positive until we get to the time of the event.
So to further answer your question real quick is because the event will be fenced in and we will be able to control ingress and egress, we'll be able to control the capacity in that area. At the present time, right now, that parking lot with its booths can probably sustain about 250 to 300 people. So we will monitor that and adjust our percentages based on what colored level we are at that time. I do expect us to be in the orange level, maybe even the yellow level at that time, which should both, both allow, have any farmer's market outdoor type of event.
Yeah, and interesting enough, the farmer's market at Hollywood Beach has been going on for some time and they seem to, there seems to be a lot of people there because I've attended there very much so over the last several months. Councilmember Martinez, do you have any more questions?
No, I think I'm good right now. Thank you, Mayor Gama.
Mayor Salinas. Rollins, I saw your hand earlier, but it's now down. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Yeah, yes, I, I think the first question was obviously answered. I just, the, and I'm kind of geographically challenged. The music that will be played, where will that be kind of emanating to? As far as like in the sound level and, and what period of time will the music be going on?
So I'll, I'll answer that. I mean, the music that we anticipate for this event is mostly ambiance music. It's a DJ with some background. It's not going to be loud blasting rock and roll and it probably won't be able to be, even be heard beyond the immediate area. So we're not looking to create a loud rock vibe. It's more of just an ambiance for the event.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez, sorry for skipping you.
Oh, no problem. I just wanted to make a motion to go ahead and approve the COP.
Thank you. Does staff have any further comments?
No, I do not.
Okay, so we just got a little bit ahead of ourselves. If there's no further discussion and if there's no public comments. Having, Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on this?
No, sir.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to close this public hearing. It's now nine oh three PM. We have a motion and a, Madam Clerk, can?
Actually, can I just say one thing before you, before you vote? Tony Stewart said if by May thirtieth, we're not able to have the festival, it would be a drive-in event. I'd like to try and clarify that a little bit and, and I don't think we would like to do a drive-in event. I think we would like to maybe have an alternative date, like push it further down the line to a, to a date that where we are able to do the event. That would be the only thing that I wanted to maybe clarify.
Yeah, and my understanding is approving this tonight, it appears that we're going to be able to proceed as planned. And if there became a dramatic change in the pandemic that necessitated a review of the plans, I'm going to say if we started going backwards, then clearly there would be a need for another public hearing and another meeting. So, so I think at this point, we are in very good shape to, to, to see, to see this go on as planned.
Eric, if I may, it's Tony. One thing we could do is we could add a condition to the, the resolution that say pushes it out, say thirty or sixty days, basically to give us a date certain that it'd be pushed out to if the pandemic continues. And that would at least not require us to come back for another public hearing because we'd have that specified, but we just need to specify that this evening.
Okay, so the recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the city council and the city report when Amy deeming a temporary event exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and conditionally approving special use permit number zero one dash twenty-one from the Earth Cannabis Farmers Market event located at five five zero East Surfside Drive N, authorizes Director of Community Development to file a notice of exemption for the project in accordance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA. Would you have to amend this resolution, Tony, in order to move on with our motion and second?
Yeah, so basically if, what the motion should probably do is if the, if the council agrees and the applicant agrees, we could, like I said, right now, through that amended motion, allow the flexibility that the event doesn't occur at the date that's specified now, that it could occur, say thirty days out or sixty days out.
Okay.
But we, but we should have a date certain, so it would be, say, June thirtieth or whatever the last weekend of June would be or the last weekend of July.
Okay, I will try to make the amended motion.
Well, you have to ask, I think you have to ask me if I want to amend it from line one minute, right? So, well, first of all, we have to make sure Dave, that From the Earth agrees to that.
That would be great. And I would say June twenty-sixth would be probably the next potential great date.
So then the motion would be to adopt the resolution and include a thirty-day day certain extension depending on the COVID restrictions at the, at that time. Does that make sense?
It does. Do we have a second?
I, yeah. I just have one question before we move on on it. Can I? And based on the tier that we have now, would we be able to do the event the way it is? If we move to an orange tier, can we do it on that event? Or do we have to move to a yellow tier to do the event the way Mr. Moss wants to have it? Anybody have an answer to that?
I believe Chief Salinas said we could do that under the orange tier. Is that correct, Chief? Maybe he had to.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Great. So I will second it. All right, no, I guess Mr. Martinez has seconded it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Sorry, just to clarify, I had Councilmember Perez as the second following Councilmember Hernandez's recommendation. Did I miss the?
It was a close call. You got it.
We'll just do like a three-way tie because I know Rich was in there too. Okay, so Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Mayor Gama and the city council and city staff and everyone for, and Chief Salinas for believing in us and working with us. And I think it's going to be an amazing event and, and let's be the first to do some really cool stuff and be innovative out there. So thank you all, appreciate it. Thank you for helping us plan our Reach Wainimi Beach Festival. That's going to be another exciting time. So, you know, things are looking better, tiers are getting less colorful, I guess. I don't know, maybe not, but anyways, we're moving on. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Plan Development Conditional Use Permit Number PHCU dash eight eight five and Development Agreement Number PHDA dash eight eight six, PH Investments Group LLC, DBA Element Seven, Port Wainimi Cannabis Dispensary, located at four five five West Channel Islands Boulevard. This hearing is now open at nine ten PM. Do any members of this council have any conflicts to disclose? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, we do.
Will staff please present the report? And tonight presenting on behalf of staff is Tony Stewart, Stewart, Community Development Director.
Great, thank you again, mayor and council. So yes, this is an application for a new cannabis dispensary here in the city along the Green Mile by PH Investments Group LLC. So the applicant, Robert DeVito, on behalf of PH Investments Group, is requesting approval to operate the retail cannabis dispensary with medicinal adult use products and ancillary delivery. And as you mentioned, mayor, this is at four fifty-five West Channel Islands Boulevard. The site, the zone, Commercial or C one, and the city's cannabis ordinance and our implementing resolutions potentially allow cannabis uses in the C one zone subject to approval of a certificate approval, conditional use permit and development agreement. The project is also consistent with the general plan land use designation of commercial. Next slide, please. The applicant, applicant actually owns several dispensaries of the Element Seven name. And they have their conditional certificate of approval on December seventh as a result of providing a complete application package to the city's review committee. Next slide, please. So the surrounding uses to the north are the Harbor, Harbor Light Community, to the South Channel Islands, Naval Base Ventura, maybe on that. And to the east and west are similar types of commercial uses. The nearest school has to be at least six hundred feet away per state law. In this case, it's actually thirty-one hundred feet away and that's Marina West Elementary in Oxnard. With regard to the, the plans, the applicant is not proposing changes to the site plan. There are eighty parking spaces serving the site. And since the dispensary use is considered similar to a retail drugstore, no changes to the parking requirements are necessary. And next slide, please. And an aerial actually borrowed from the applicant, showing the proposed location in black there in that middle shopping center building.
Okay.
Next slide, please.
See you tomorrow at seven thirty?
Seven thirty, I'll be here.
And then the site, site plan, again, showing the, the parking around the existing shopping center and a floor plan. It's a fairly narrow suite, just a little over a thousand square feet, showing that you'll come in lobby at the bottom. Then there will be the retail area after being checked in in the middle. And then the rear portion consists of the storage area, a staff room, the back entry and a restroom for staff. Next slide, please. So the hours of operation are proposed to be ten AM to nine PM, seven days per week. Our ordinance actually allows nine AM to nine PM. Customers would be twenty-one years of age or older. No loitering would be allowed, as with all of our dispensaries. Similar to our other dispensaries as well, the odor control will consist of a carbon filter HVAC system or heating ventilation air conditioning system. There'll be an onsite office with two to three guards on the site and then the dispensary. And staffing, the applicant is going to, is proposing the minimum of seventy percent of their staff be local residents. They have to be at least twenty-one years of age or older. And the applicant is proposing a minimum hourly rate of $25 with benefits. And that would go up from there. Next slide, please. Then the applicant actually has a pretty robust community benefits program. I highlighted some of the programs that they're proposing in the staff report and here. They would donate to Reach and local food shares, establish a micro loan program to help community members if they've got financial hardships. They'll be requiring their employees to donate a minimum of ten hours of volunteer work to a charity of their choice quarterly. They'll also be providing cannabis at reduced cost to seniors, retired veterans and patients who receive government assistance. And this is among other programs that they are proposing. Next slide, please. And then with regard to the development agreement, which is PHDA eight eight six, as I mentioned previously, the city can enter into development agreements. And since Port Wainimi has no cannabis tax, that's the method that we use to ensure that we will get a portion of the revenues. And so what specifically the development agreement requires an applicant to do is to pay a contractual payment, five percent of the business's gross annual revenues to the city's general fund. They have to maintain all of their books and records accurately and pay up to two audits a year and obtain a certificate of approval, a certificate of occupancy, excuse me, for the dispensary with one year after the development agreement becomes effective. Next slide, please. This project is categorically exempt from CEQA in that it's basically a use, a retail type of use occupying an existing suite with no, no modifications being proposed to the site. Next slide, please. And so the applicant, based on their three-year performance that they provided, is expecting to generate about $2.3 million the first year in gross revenues, going up to about a little over 3.1 million the second year and over 3.7 the third year. And what that translates to us with regard to the rate of 5% of the gross retail sales would be approximately ninety-six thousand five hundred revenue paid to the city first year, about one twenty-two, five hundred the second year and a little over 147,000 the third year. And next slide, please. And so the recommendation is that the city council over in the hearing take evidence, then close the hearing and consider that evidence. After considering it, adopt a resolution granting approval of PHCU eight eight five, introduced by title only and waiving full reading, an ordinance approving and adopting a development agreement for PH Investments Group LLC. And that would have adoption to follow at the next regularly scheduled council meeting and take such additional related action that may be desirable. And so that concludes my presentation. The applicant and his team are here this evening as well and they have a brief presentation that they'd like to share with you to introduce themselves. And then they, as well as myself, will be available for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and turn this over, I believe, to Robert DeVito.
Evening, Council. Try and start my video quickly, some reason it's not, it's not working. Tony, I believe you have to start. I can't start my video because it stopped your.
Right, why don't you go ahead and just have her city clerk.
Perfect.
Probably easier and smoothest that way.
Excellent, thank you, Tony. Mayor Gama, council members, city staff, constituents of Port Wainimi. My name is Josh Black. I'm head of operations, Element Seven. Prior to joining the cannabis industry, I worked for PepsiCo for over a decade, running their great business for them. Wanted to take you through a quick presentation tonight. We do have Robert here, he's in the same hotel room as me at the moment for the presentation. I have Chris Bloom on the phone as well, who's our head of community development, and Amber Norwood, who's our chief compliance officer. Tony, if you could please advance the next slide. So we have a very diverse, experienced team. Everyone on this chart has a story behind them. Up in the top left-hand corner, you can see Robert with the blue coat on. Robert's background was in education. He ran charter schools in Chicago before getting into the cannabis industry. I won't go through all the people, obviously, I know it's, it's a long night. But just to highlight a couple of other. But just to highlight a couple of other people, Amber, to Robert's. Apologize to the one in the, in the blue jacket with the white. We do have scaled retail operations across California at the moment. These are some images of our dispensary which opened about four months ago. We're very happy and proud of the quality of the the revenue generated to the city. If I look at our weekly numbers today versus what they were two months ago, we're probably up about sixty percent month on month on sales. So everything's going great up there. We have a delivery business out of South San Francisco as well, which does over three hundred orders a day. And another dispensary in Berkeley, as well as one in Los Angeles in the mid-city area. If you go to the next slide. Tony showed you this before, but this is our project location, just off West Channel Islands Boulevard. I think most of you are familiar with this location. Plenty of parking. It is a fairly narrow unit, but we obviously have tried to optimize the space as best as possible. The former tenant here was the flower shop. We actually helped relocate her about a year ago to a busier part of Ventura County where she had desired to start her business, you know, in a more busy area. And she's doing great. And we're very, you know, very proud of helping her out. Next slide. This again is the site. I think you've seen this one already, so I'll flip to the next one and just focus on this slide. As you can see here, the customer entrance down on the bottom right-hand corner, people would walk into the dispensary and they'd be in a secure lobby, which is a man trap. And what that means is they have to get their ID checked before they can effectively enter the store. That is a glass wall there. It's a poly material, so it's, you know, it's very secure. We have an ID checker there. People enter and then shop at one of three POS retail outlets. We have an all-gender bathroom at the back that's ADA compliant, a small staff area, and then a secured cannabis storage area where obviously the data and any cash would also be stored in there as well. Cash collections happen every other day or as needed to, you know, operate a secure business. People, after they finish shopping, exit through the door on the left-hand side there. And then they move out into the, into the car park and either walk or take a vehicle home. Next slide. We, as a business, I don't want to spend too much more time because I know everyone's been busy tonight. There's been some way more interesting presentations than myself, but just wanted to highlight some of the industry partnerships we have. We work very closely with UFCW and have a labor peace agreement in place. With that union, we've worked with them for about a year and a half now. We've also partnered up with UCLA with a business school to run educational programs with UCLA for their students, as well as partnering with them on their thesis. We're really proud of our relationship with INDICA, which is the National Diversity and Inclusion Alliance for Cannabis, a group that works across California representing Black and Brown communities and trying to get their participation increased in the industry, as well as Latinos for cannabis. We have a number of veterans that work within our business as well, including some disabled vets. Next slide. Just from a really quick sort of operational perspective, any product that is damaged or is not going to be used, or it's returned, or it goes past its use by date, goes into one of those red medway spins. And then we have a one-hundred-point vendor program to ensure that brands that go onto our shelves are doing the right thing in their own communities. So if they're growing in Humboldt, they're not, you know, pushing off wastewater that's contaminated into local creeks. If they're growing in the desert, that they're not, you know, wasting power and also having water runoff issues. So we're very focused on making sure that brands that come into our stores are doing the right things in their own communities. Sorry, next one. I think this is the odor management slide. So yes, we don't see any odor management issues in Port Huaynimi, simply because all products that come in are packaged and leave packaged. But there are a number of things we do around the HVAC system, the odor cleansing system. We have that nasal refractometer that goes outside the store, which actually can can detect if there's any odors leaking from the property that are a problem that we can fix. And then we decorate our dispensary with odor-enhancing plants that actually naturally soak up odors. Next slide. Very focused on security. This actually is a lobby that would be very similar to the one we've proposed. This is actually from our store in Port, sorry, in Fort Bragg. You can see there that there's a door in and a door out with a, you know, it's a wall of glass, but it's there for security as well as, you know, keep people out of the dispensary that aren't supposed to be there. But we do that in a kind of a nice, clean way that still enhances the retail experience. And then at the bottom, you can see some of the safety and security measures that we put in. Every door has a access control. We have a security system, an alarm system, a fire system. Everything's done very properly. Next slide. I think this is our, this is my last slide. Again, just want to highlight some of the stuff we do in communities. Very focused on working with public defenders to run expungement clinics. We've partnered up with, with LARP in Los Angeles, as well as the Public Defender in Fresno to run expungement clinics. We've done job fairs with EDD. We are a company that, you know, truly believes in having a strong business purpose is what, is what our customers and patients are looking for. They want to shop with companies that have a defined point of view on helping the community. And we'd be, you know, love to help local initiatives. You know, I was really impressed last, about an hour ago, with the Ormond Beach Shilberd Recovery Program. We'd love to support that. As Tony mentioned, we have committed to the city fund of five percent, the one percent city charitable contribution. And I also, you know, feel very strongly about kids with autism and was, you know, really impressed with the work that the police chief's doing in that regard. We'd love to support those sort of programs. Next slide, I think is the last one. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions of staff? I see some hands. Councilmember Hernandez.
Oh, thank you. I wasn't the first one up, though. Do you want to go by who went first? I think Councilwoman Perez had hers up and Councilman, Councilman Protem, Mayor Protem Rollins had his up before me, so.
I don't know.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeVito, for your presentation. I'm really happy to hear that you manage and maintain a social justice program, an environmental justice program, along with your business. The question I have for you is, how many of your employees were hired from our local area, either Port Huaynimi, Oxnard area?
So our intention, Ms. Hernandez, is to employ at least seventy-five percent of our staff in the dispensary as locals. In Fort Bragg, we set that same bar and we had a hundred percent of our staff are locals. And I don't see why, there's any reason why we can't do that. There are, you know, great retail staff, great hospitality staff in the area, and I don't see any issues with meeting that sort of number.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Couple, Member Perez.
Hi, yes, thank you. So I appreciate your community plan to give back to the community. I appreciate the idea of you, seventy percent of your employees are going to be local and the starting wage. And I appreciate the business model you have. But my question is, given the sales that you expect and given the already inundated dispensaries that we have going on, how do you, where do you get those numbers and how do you expect your business to perform, given the amount that we already have going?
Yeah, Ms. Perez, I think the thing that would separate us with some of the other local dispensaries is, is two things. First of all, our strong focus on education. We do some really amazing educational programs up in Berkeley with local aged care facilities, bringing those patients in on buses and really educating them on topicals, creams, lotions, and that sort of stuff, medical-type products. I would see that as a point of difference for us, but also we do have a cultivation operation in Carpinteria in Santa Barbara County. We are vertical. We produce a lot of flour up there, and that will, I believe, give us a price advantage, which is less focused about fighting other dispensaries in the city, but more so focused on tackling the illicit illegal market, which is our biggest competitor. Eighty percent of sales go to that illicit illegal market. The fact that we're vertically integrated means that we can really serve up good-quality cannabis at a much lower price point than potentially unvertically-integrated operators could deliver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my question is along those same lines. At what point, is there a point where the laws of diminishing returns kick in and where the city of Port Huaynimi would not be a viable location for you? And then the second question I have is, did you apply for a dispensary license in the city of Oxford?
Mayor Gama, we did actually apply for a license in Oxnard. We were not successful in securing one in Oxnard. We performed extremely well on the written part of the application and got a ninety-nine percent score. On the Zoom interview, we didn't do as well. I'm not sure if that was because the city was looking for something else or they, you know, were favoring local applicants. But we did apply up there. We were not successful. To address, to address the question of diminishing returns, you know, I, I really feel strongly that we're a great operator. We have an excellent business model. I think what the city needs is to continue to innovate. I was really excited to see the, the farmer's market concept. I think that if Port Huaynimi keeps supporting businesses that are driving innovation, that will provide some defense for the city as those dispensaries come online in Ventura County, Ventura City, and Oxnard as well. And I think our vertical integration and our education model is, you know, is something that's a point of difference and will, you know, potentially draw some of those customers from those cities into Port Huaynimi, which improves local business for everybody.
What would you say to a city like us who has not put a limit, a number on the amount of dispensaries that we're going to allow? Other cities have done that, particularly Oxnard has decided they're going to approve, I think, fifteen or sixteen. And so, you know, at what point would you say to the city of Port Huaynimi, okay, I think you have enough dispensaries now? Because as you know, we're a very small city. And we are, I think you would be our tenth or eleventh dispensary in the confines of our small city. So what would you say to, would you say to this city, okay, if you approve me, then don't approve anymore? Or would you say, keep approving? And at what point would you say, okay, the market is saturated?
I think if applicants are bringing something that's, you know, slightly different to what other competitors are offering in the market, there's potential that they're going to draw an audience that is different to what the other, you know, operators are delivering right now. And that's no different to fashion or coffee or, you know, mobile phone providers. Every, everyone has a different span, a different point of view on the industry. Our point of view is, I think, different to some of the other operators. I think the zoning that's currently in the city of Port Huaynimi actually means that it's going to be very difficult to find additional applicants, just because, you know, the city's kind of, you know, pretty much tapped out on its real estate now for cannabis. But, you know, my view is, let the market kind of dictate, you know, who the best operators are, whether that's based on price, quality, or customer service. And if those businesses can provide a sustainable business model, then I don't see why they should be limited in terms of, you know, sheer numbers in much the same way that you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you know, put a cap on cafes or restaurants. I think, I think that the market can sort of, you know, sustain itself if those operators are delivering value and quality to their customers.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Mayor Protem Rollins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Black. I first wanted to applaud you on a very impressive presentation. You touched a lot of bases. You're, you seem to be a very progressive company. I had a few little questions. When you mentioned that the employees would get twenty-five dollars an hour with benefits, is that both part-time and full-time people? And what would the percentage of full-time persons versus part-time people that you hope to have?
I would expect that around sixty-five percent of our employees would be full-time, with the balance being part-time. We're very focused on providing a higher level of wage because we want to attract a, you know, a better quality candidate that wants to build a career with us and stay with our company for years and, you know, and potentially even move to other locations within our business network across California and step up from budtenders to shift leaders to managers. We do pay higher-than-average wages in the industry, and that's because, you know, we're very focused on employing people that can deliver a very strong educational message. We think there's a lot of re-education that needs to happen in cannabis and education itself. If I look at all the faces on this call tonight, you actually represent the cannabis customer today. The fastest-growing part of the industry is not twenty-to-twenty-nine-year-olds. It is middle-aged people, people with careers, people that, you know, I would call soccer moms that are sort of in their, in their thirties and forties that have a couple of kids and age parents, and they're the ones that are looking for these solutions. And my experience is that a number of dispensaries across the market in California are trying to deliver a service and product to everybody. We are far more focused on a specific audience. And we're very happy with that. And it's not for everybody, but for the people that it is for, they get a tremendous amount of education and value from our product.
I'm sorry, Mr. Black. I'm twenty-five. Am I kind of out of this?
I mean, I thought you were in your early thirties, Richard. Yeah, no, it's, it's, look, it's, you have to be, you have to have a point of view and you have to have a vision for the brand. And our vision is really to, to focus on education and to go for that slightly older age group.
And I noticed at the slides that different cannabis operations that you maintain have different names. How did you come up with Element Seven? Because I noticed the one that was up north had a completely different name.
Yeah, the one up north is called The Bakery, which is a far more lifestyle-driven concept. Element Seven, the seventh element in the periodic table is nitrogen, which is essential for plant growth. We like that name because it is associated with plant-based medicines and cannabis, but it isn't obviously, you know, a green or a four-twenty or a cannon name. So we, that was the name of our business and the name of our company that we established two years ago. We're just opening up an Element Seven store up in Rio Del, just south of Eureka. And we have another one being built at the moment in Marina. And Element Seven is our, is our main brand for retail. The bakery is more of a lifestyle-driven, you know, beach-type concept. And we think that works well in some places and other places. It's not as appropriate.
Thank you. If I could, for a second, I just got an email that residents, participants or who are watching our livestream got kicked out. Are we experiencing any technical difficulties?
Mayor, I heard, I read that same email and I've asked our IT department to, for clarification on what happened. I've not heard back yet, so I will provide you an update as soon as I possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hernandez, is your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gama. Mr. Black, thank you so much. I'm sorry I referred to you as Mr. DeVito, but thank you for your. but thank you for your information. I really appreciate it. I, this question that I have is really, I think, for Tony, Mr. Stewart, if you're still there. It has to do with the paragraph related to charitable contributions, and I believe I've brought this up before. This sounds to me like boilerplate language that goes into all your staff reports when we're approving cannabis businesses. And I'm just, it's not a big deal, but I'm a little bothered that we continue to reach, mention Reach and Food Shares. And we don't mention any other local nonprofits like Friends of the Library. Is there a reason we don't have other options listed in the staff report as far as charitable contributions?
Sure. So it's, it's not boilerplate language that I put in. This is language that comes from the applications.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. So we had already approved ninety thousand dollars for, for the city to clean up, or basically to hire someone else to clean up the creek, Bubbling Springs, Bubbling Springs Creek. And then were we not anticipating this or we were anticipating this? Because, I mean, in order for us to continue to do that cleanup, this is what's needed? Just to pretty much try to understand?
The redabatement is a completely separate issue. We just happen to be using the same consulting firm to perform an analysis in advance of the work. If their analysis is completed prior to this SEQA assessment that pertains to the park parcel, we can essentially scoop that up and apply it and lessen the cost that we're asking for in this particular regard. But I, I can't speak to the particulars of the Public Works contract for Rincon Consulting Services. I have a surface-level overview and understanding that in my conversations with Rincon, there can be a bit of overlap as far as their, just their analysis. That's not speaking to the costs associated with the actual performance of the abatement.
So if I may, Councilmember Martinez, so I think what's a little bit confusing is change order to existing agreement with Rincon Consultants. So what is the existing agreement that we have with them already?
Tony? Professional Services Agreement?
Yes, so we retain Rincon with regard to my department for assistance with planning projects. For instance, there are consultants for the general plan. If we do need to have environmental analysis such as this, we do work with them. Prior to my coming on board with the city, we actually had Rincon staff as the city planner. So we use them for a wide variety of planning-related services. Now, I believe that in the public works project realm, they have a separate contract. And so the we-abatement program would not be necessarily through my contract. And that was not an amendment to it. But in this case, because we are using them or asking to use them for environmental analysis, that would fall under the planning contract we have in place with them currently.
Any other questions?
Do, are there any other companies that also do these services? I'm just curious because I, I feel like I hear Rincon a lot. And so I'm just wondering, like, do we do our job in terms of, like, interviewing other companies and seeing, okay, who should we be using?
We can. We do that once in a while. We do that with Building a Safety as well. In this case, because time is of the essence and because we do have the contract in place and we are satisfied with the work that they've been doing for us, we move forward with this particular contract amendment.
Are there any other questions of staff?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Sure.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good luck. Yeah, this brings us to councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Perez, would you like to go first?
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez, would you like to go second?
Sure. I have a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. I don't really have any committee reports. But I did want to, I forgot at the last council meeting to talk about the visit by the Backpack Medicine folks from the county's Continuum Care Program. And that will be part of the presentation that Councilman Martinez and I will be delivering. And I believe Chief Salinas will also be speaking to what they did, what we, what we found, what the results were, you know, how many people we helped. And just my general perspective and viewpoint of what I observed on that day going out with them was that they have a lot of resources and they are very organized and able to, to help our homeless population. It does consume a lot of resources. One person can take up a whole team of people for an hour or two, but I was really impressed. And I thought it was a really good program. I think it's something that we, we should continue to support. And I just also wanted to thank Councilwoman Perez for coming up with the idea to do the backpacks that contain the, the supplies for the homeless, because that was part of the effort of going out with the Backpack Medicine group was to deliver these backpacks with supplies. So she might want to comment on it later or next time. But it's been a, it's been a, a good effort on, on part of our council members to look at this issue and to take some actions to, to hopefully come up with some ideas and solutions for how we help the homeless. Speaking of that, I wanted to bring your attention to a symposium that's being sponsored by the United Way. And it's going to be held this Friday at nine AM. It's the United to End Homeless Virtual Symposium with a keynote speaker, Dr. Matthew Desmond. You all should have received a notice of it in your mailbox. If not, I'm happy to send this to our city clerk and, or city manager and have him, he or her get this out to you. But I've, I've registered. It is twenty-five dollars, I think, from our conference and travel budget. We should be able to draw some money from that to, to pay for us to participate in that. So just wanted to encourage councilmembers to do that. And then the other thing I wanted to bring attention to is the Premier America Credit Union. They were before our city council a while back. They're a new credit union that are housed at the Mandalay Beach Shopping Center. And they're conducting, they're doing some community outreach and community benefit program. Where they're asking us to vote for your favorite charity. And they will donate money, I think up to five thousand dollars to the charity that receives votes. And right now, you know, there's, there's three charities on here. There's the Boys and Girls Club. There's the Friends of the Library and there's Reach. So not to make this any kind of competition, but I am supporting the library in this case. And I'm just wanted to encourage people to support Friends of the Library and to make that vote in their favor. They don't get much attention or much support like Reach does. Nothing against Reach or nothing against Boys and Girls Club, but would just like to draw your attention to this. You can vote for whoever you want, but I'm asking for your vote for the library this time. So, thank you. That's all I have. Oh, one more thing, one more thing. I'd like to ask for this meeting to be, please be adjourned in memory of Georgia Carpenter who passed away this last week.
Absolutely. Was a wonderful member of the city of Port Huonimi. Councilmember Martinez, any comments?
I'm not sure if this is the time for me to mention, like, some of the things that I wanted to say in terms of, like, for the next city council meeting. That's not what you mean, right?
Right. That'll be our last item request for future agenda items. But this is for comments regarding any interactions or meetings that you've had.
No, no, no comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Just two. I attended the Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting that I'm, you're rep for. And they have some interesting things regarding the pandemic as far as transportation and where, as they look forward. One of the things is they're exploring the idea of making public transportation free. A number of other cities and states have gone to that direction to encourage public transportation. And so they're looking at, you know, the pros and cons to that. And so it's something to be thinking about. Another issue is like we, the Metro Rail. What they've found is with the pandemic during the day-to-day work schedule, like a Monday through Friday, there's been a great reduction in the amount of rail service, probably because people are working from home more. But what they have found is an increase in, is on the weekend rail transportation. People using the rail for kind of their leisure use during the weekends and stuff. So it's an interesting thing that's come about. I guess another item, Councilman Martinez and I have been working with the Boys and Girls Club. And they are very positive towards making their facility available for community programs on the weekday evenings after their program finishes and on the weekends. So as we move into the Recreation and Park Master Plan and look at different alternatives and programs for the community, that's a facility that we are working with the Boys and Girls Club. And, and they are very positive towards making that available for the community for these programs. So that's a good thing.
Thank you. A- any further comments, Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
No.
Councilmember Martinez, saw your hand up for a sec?
Yeah, I guess I could say that two weekends or last weekend, the weekend before this weekend, I went to go check out a canine unit on Fontana, a, a training center for canines. I don't know if we were ever thinking about getting a canines, but that's just an idea. You know, I just, I just want to let you guys know that I want to go check it out. It was cool. We got educated. They showed us the dogs. It was really cool to see all the things that they can do.
Thank you for that. This last Thursday, Mayor Pro Tem Rollins and I walked Bubbling Springs baseball fields with city manager Connors. And we kind of came to the realization that the fields have been closed for a year and that the baseball Huonimi Little League is, is gearing up to start on May first. And we, we discovered that the fields need some work. And we, we all surveyed it and, and we want to let the, the little leaguers know that we're aware and we're working and we're going to deliver those fields ready for playing baseball on May first. And so I think it's a, it's part of our effort to, to make youth the very important persons in our community, especially coming out of this COVID environment. And I know we're all working really hard to improve our parks and really appreciate the fact that city manager came out and, and walked the park with us and, and took a hard look at what needs to be done. Thank him for that. I don't have any other, oh, I do have a comment. I think it would be nice if we look at ways to support Ormond Beach and what they're doing out there. I think at some point in time, I've heard all of us say that, you know, having rules, having ordinances in place, if we're not going to enforce it, kind of defeats the purpose. And, you know, the dogs and the motorcycles on the beach and all that, I mean, it's completely unacceptable when, when we're trying to improve that environment out there. And, you know, we try, we're doing it in so many ways. So hopefully, hopefully we could find ways to work together with the Autobahn Society and, and find ways to enforce the rules that we know are needed to keep that place pristine and, and, and good. That's all the comments I have at this point in time.
I had one more, Mayor Gama?
Yes, go ahead, please.
My, sorry, my memory is failing me tonight. I also wanted to mention that this weekend, several of us were out assisting the Port of Huonimi, Oxnard Harbor District Food Distribution at Boca Park. And I want to thank Councilman Martinez and Councilwoman Perez for being there. It was a great event and I want to thank Oxnard Port District for doing this in our neighborhood. It was well-attended. They actually gave away groceries plus a food cart, which I thought was really interesting. But I, I guess after conducting these food distributions over time, they noticed that a lot of people don't have anything to carry their food in. So Miguel Rodriguez from the port came up with the idea of these food carts. And so they were, we, I think, were successful in getting rid of almost half of them. They had over a hundred of those out there and probably a couple of hundred of those carts out there. So it was quite a, a successful event. But while we were there, one of the things we noticed too was that Boca Park is neglected park. I mean, there's, it's, I know it's on the list with things to be done, but Councilwoman Perez and I talked about doing a cleanup at that park. I know we focus a lot on the beach, but our parks need cleaning, cleaning up too. And so we're going to make some plans to do some more, to do some more outreach, do some community events at Boca Park and to do some cleanup there. So you'll be hearing more about that in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been over there a couple of times with our buckets. And it, yeah, it, it does get a little trashy from time to time. And one of the things that I noticed was that that food event was very close to a coral tree. And a coral tree fell over in Surfside Four recent, just Sunday, I believe it was, yesterday. And it just reminds me of of the risk these trees are beginning to, to expose our community with. But anyways, I digress and we will now move on to requests for future agenda items.
Steve, we have, Misty had her hand up.
Misty Perez?
I'm a council, Perez, I'm sorry.
It's okay. That is my name. No, I, I just wanted to make a comment because I think Councilmember Hernandez, I completely forgot, even though I was there and they're great events and I thank her for reminding me that I've been involved in these things. A lot of stuff on my mind lately, but yeah, the backpack medicine thing, even though, you know, I did, I did have a thought about that. And I, and it was actually Chief and I who came together and put that thought together. It wasn't my sole idea. I won't take credit one hundred percent and I'm just glad that we were able to do it. And the backpack medicine thing was very eye-opening and very encouraging. And they were very well organized and they actually have on-hand resources that they gave us information that if anybody has any issues, we can call them and they can come out and assist. And if anybody has a homeless person they need to have taken a look at or taken care of, we can call them and they can come out. And, and if they're available, obviously, to give personal care to. So I, I think our city manager was putting together, he got all the contact information for all those different people. And I think he was going to put together a list so we would all have access to it. And the, this weekend, that event was fantastic and I appreciate the port doing that. And I would love to see that community, it happen more often. And even though there wasn't a big turnout, but it was, it was a good turnout and any turnout is a good turnout. And so I'd love to see more involvement with that park, that community and get them to know that we are here. I know they're very reluctant. I know they're very reluctant and they don't put a lot of trust in people. So I'd love to see that change and let them know that, you know, we are community, we're here to help them. So sorry about that, but yes, that's all they need.
Yes, and thank you. It's funny how we get reminded. As you know, we're going to close this meeting tonight in, in memory of Georgia Carpenter. And I wanted to let everyone know that the funeral services for Georgia Carpenter will be held at Canal Mountain Cemetery at 2:00 p.m. on Friday, April 9th. Also, you know, I, I've been hearing all this homeless, you know, trying to focus and figure out how to help the homeless people in our community. And one of the things that I have committed myself to doing is I'm going to call the homeless database. And the phone number is 805-385-1800. And I've tried to interact with some of our familiar faces in and around the, the beach and parking lots. And I've run into a not a very accepting of help. But I think we all, when we come across somebody in need, I think we need to make the call. We need, and, you know, it may get old, but I think we need to make the call, make the call and encourage interaction. And hopefully at some point in time, some of these people can accept the help that they need. It breaks my heart to see people with mental illness. And I'm not a doctor, but it's pretty clear to see when somebody's talking to themselves or to a tree or in a disheveled state of mind. There's an individual that I've come across now and he won't even talk. Hey, what's your name? He won't even talk. And so I am going to start making the call, as many calls as I can. And I, I just hope that at some point in time, that we could turn one of these lives around. And, and, you know, what a wonderful thing that will be. But so again, the number for the, the homeless liaison and they have a database where they get people into the database. And then they try to reconnect contact and try to guide them to services. So the number is 385-1800. And I think all of us should, should try as, as much as we can to help these people because they really do need help. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a problem. And, and I, I hope that we could do something about it. Are there any other comments? Mayor Pro Tem Rollins, we, we, you have your memory, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's such exciting energy with this council. One of the things I just wanted to comment on, on Councilman Hernandez's talk that Boca really needs a lot of work is I think the city and Ms. Hanley are working on a grant that's being targeted specifically for Boca Park. I know they did about a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, they did some outreach into the community to get to some surveys from the local residents to find out what they really want and what they think they need at that park. And so that park and I think Bubbling Springs are targeted for this grant. So hopefully our city is successful about getting the funds to get that park. Because, you know, really that's the only park in that area. I know my son now lives somewhere in that area. And so one of the things from visiting my son is there's a lot of youth in that area. You know, perhaps, I think perhaps more than many, I, I'd be curious about the statistics, but there's a lot of youth in that area. So I think parks are really, and our theme to kind of benefit the youth and push for the youth, I think that's a, a prime park to work on. So.
I think we have, we, we are focusing on all the parks in the city of Port Huonimi, including the Beach Park. And I think that's, that's where our minds have to be to support the youth of our community, especially coming out of this pandemic. Okay, moving on to requests for future items on the agenda. Who would like to go first? Anybody?
Well, I'll go ahead and go and just reiterate the request to follow up with the presentations of the Future Leaders of America and have staff come back with a report on what that, how that might impact us, the proposal to prohibit flavored tobacco in stores and then also the residential, multi-residential ordinance that they're also requesting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have any future items for the agenda?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping, I know we hadn't mentioned it before, maybe, I don't know, maybe they said we weren't allowed to talk about it. But putting a cap on the dispensaries, I think would be helpful for all the current dispensaries that we have right now, especially since we are already, you know, one of the cities with the most dispensaries in terms of, you know, its ratio to its citizens. That's, I guess that's one.
Can we vote on that one first before we move on to the second?
Excuse me, Mayor? As a, a component of the smoking working group that was performed about a month ago, one of the directions coming under that was to do a SWOT analysis. And that SWOT analysis will be presented, which includes recommendations for the council. And so I think that will satisfy the request for an agenda item.
Okay, that's, that's good.
What is, what does the SWOT stand for exactly?
Strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
Okay, thanks. Second, I'd, I'd like for the city to give us a brief on street vending. I thought it was really cool to see the police explorer selling ice cream and, and at the wheelhouse event. And it just kind of got me thinking. It's like what, we don't ever see any, and we don't ever see people selling ice cream at the beach or anything else on the beach. So I just, I wanted to get like a brief on, on street vending on the beach, if that's possible.
Sure, I'll second that motion. We take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
I don't know. It just sounds like a simple yes or no. We have an ordinance against street vending. But I'll go ahead and say yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
I would say yes with the idea exploring if there's a possibility to change that ordinance. Perhaps at least explore what the pros and cons would be.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins, do you have any requests for future agenda items?
I know, I, I, I think I was thinking, first I was going to piggyback on what Mr. Connor said. We had a couple of weeks ago, we had a big discussion on, you know, lim, you know, the, the idea of limiting. I think one of the points that was brought up is per capita, we are the largest cannabis seller in the world. And so I, I know, the reason why I think we probably have to address that, and I'm going to confirm that, is that a lot of times people communicate anytime they stand here.
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem, we are getting into discussion now. I think and we approved it and we'll look for it to be on a future agenda item.
Okay.
All right. Any other requests for future agenda items? Mr. Pro Tem?
No.
Okay, I have one. And what I would like to propose is that we have a discussion on the, it's kind of ironic, it's Arbor Day. But we have a discussion on the fate of coral trees in the city of Port Huonimi. They, there's issues with them and I, I think we need to have a discussion and have alternatives to coral trees. So that's my motion.
Could, could I amend it that we look at the whole tree policy? Not exclusively to coral trees, but generally, you know, how we make decisions on the planting trees and the taking down of.
Second, I'll second your motion.
Did you just have a presentation on the tree policy last, last year?
There's problems and I think we need to delve into it and thus is for the motion and second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. Last chance for any other further future requests for future agenda items. Hearing none?
Mayor Gama, I have, I have one in, in last week's meeting. One of the things that I had brought up was maybe, I, I don't know, discussing, not necessarily banning plastics, but limiting plastics, especially since you, you do the beach cleanups. I know we find a lot of, you know, plastic out there and I don't know, there's this concern of mine, you know, just to protect the earth. And I don't know how, what, what we can do in terms of, you know, like limiting plastics in our city. I don't know if we have to conduct surveys, see what the citizens in our city want. But I, I, I don't, I don't know how, how to go about like motioning this, but I, I'd want us to have a discussion at least in plastics, you know, like plastic use in our city.
Yeah, I would amend it to be plastics and styrofoam.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Plastic, plastics and styrofoam, that, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's amazing. So, and I know we're overloading the city manager now with agenda items, but, and I know that we can't get them all on the, the next meeting. But I would second Councilmember Martinez's request for at some future date, have some alternatives to plastic and styrofoam on the agenda. So that's the second and if we could take a roll call vote, that'd be great.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Perez, was that a yes?
Sorry, no.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2.
You, as mentioned earlier, the city of Port Huonimi lost an icon member of our city in Georgia Carpenter. And we'd like to close this meeting in her honor and our condolences out to the Carpenter family. What a beautiful life this lady had and she was so sweet to my mom when my mom first got here. And she, she's just an amazing person and we'll miss her greatly. And I'd like to adjourn this meeting in her honor. And we'll see you at the next meeting, Monday, April 19th, 2021, which will be broadcast at 6:30 p.m., probably on a Zoom agenda, just like we are tonight. And with that, this meeting will be adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate your patience with me.
Thank you for all the presentations.
Thank you for the presentations. Thank you for the snowy plover and we'll see you all.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff.
For supporting this meeting.
Thank you, Christie.
Hanging in there with us. It was 10:30.
Yes, thank you. Good night.
Good night.